Certainly, Miss. Miss Langgallis?
Here.
Mr. Cantor?
Here.
Mr. Patches?
Here.
Mr. Muschak?
Here.
Ms. Tabashnik?
Here.
And Mr. Shulman?
Here.
And Mr. Rowena, sorry, he disappeared for a second.
Here.
Okay, you're all set.
Good, seeding of members. We, we do, as you remember, we have one vacancy plus. We are missing one member. So we can see both Mr. Patches and Ms. Tabashnik. So.
Mr. Chairman, I'll need to recuse myself from the Chestnut Street Public Hearing.
Okay, it's not, actually, it's not a public hearing. It's an eight, it's an eight twenty-four review, but thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for that. And, and that is the First Order of Business. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-three. It's an eight twenty-four review. The redevelopment agency. Chestnut Street, City of Norwalk. Sale of property to Spinnaker Real Estate Partners. As part of a transit-oriented. Development project on Chestnut Street. And who is going to handle this?
That's me, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, please.
All right, well, good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. I'm Brian Bedoli. I'm the Executive Director for the Norwalk Redevelopment Agency. If I haven't met all of you. I mean, what was described and what we're putting forth for consideration tonight is related to the city sale of a piece of property. It's actually currently houses sixty surface lot. Parking spaces at the South Norwalk Train Station. I'll pull up a map here in a second. But effectively, in order to transact on this for the development that Chairman Shulman just mentioned. For a two-hundred-unit mixed-use development at fifteen seventeen Chestnut Street. Part of that is the development of a land disposition agreement. So we've been working with the Common Council to develop that. They've actually, the Economic and Community Development Committee has approved that. And then as part of the Connecticut General Statutes, they referred it to the Planning and Zoning Commission. For an eight twenty-four review, which effectively requires us before we sell any land to make sure that the sale of that land. Is consistent with the city's plan of conservation and development. So I'll just provide a pretty high-level overview. Of course, this is going to be the first step, the land disposition agreement. But then from here, it's still going to need to go through the typical entitlements, your review. Design review and the like. So there's going to be a lot of additional consideration on this project. But this is really just to authorize the deal and ensure that it's consistent with the plan of conservation and development. That being said, I know, I understand you've considered a text amendment in recent months related to this. But we're kind of taking this at a higher level, and this is the, the project here. For those of you just getting familiar, this is the South Norwalk Train Station Building. Or is it depicted on this concept map? And then actually, the property that we're talking about conveying encompasses the area that this building is shown right here. So you see this little dotted line. I'll pull up the actual conveyance map. I'm sure it's not the most helpful graphic, considering its resolution. But you know what? I think it might be helpful. Let me actually go to an aerial real quick. I think that'll probably be the best bet. I had one pulled up here. One quick second. You know what? That actually got closed out. So all right, so we'll work up this. If you have questions, I'm happy to entertain them. So this is the sixty, the area that houses the sixty service parking lot, spaces that I mentioned for commuter parking. The project that is being contemplated is to combine with the adjacent property owner. Spinnaker actually currently owns this development site. To create a larger development pad to sort of maximize the potential right there around the South Norwalk Train Station. On this project came out of our discussions in terms of the South Norwalk Train Station area plan as well. So we've done a lot of. Planning around it, working to structure this public-private partnership. But the actual conveyance that you're contemplating today is this area shaded in the gray right here. And effectively, what that would do, and as I mentioned, would enable a larger development pad, allow us to kind of increase the density right there by the train station. And then one of the nice things too is we're actually provided a six million dollar grant from the state of Connecticut as part of this project. To help with area infrastructure upgrades. So what we've committed to as part of the development is obviously, you know, I know a very important. Component of the discussions you often have with developers, making sure that we have adequate streetscapes and public realm. And as part of this project too, we're interrogating as much green infrastructure as we could impart into the development with the additional state resources. So the area highlighted here in, in the red. Actually represent the underground utility work that we plan on doing, and then the blue is the streetscape work that we plan on doing with the grant. In addition to a larger scope, which we're going to be defining moving forward through a design process. And hopefully informed through your entitlement discussions with the developer as they proceed. So that's sort of the high level. I don't know if there's any specific questions. Again, it's really talking about is the sale of the land consistent with the plan of conservation and development? And then from there, they'll obviously be making application for the larger projects, talk about the design, you know, and the use and such.
Are there any questions? Uh, Brian, can you just take a moment to explain the redevelopment agency's involvement in this?
Yeah, so effectively, we were operating as a business agent on behalf of the city. So we're, we're helping the transaction from the structuring, the overall deal. Negotiating with the developer, but ultimately is the sale of a city asset. So that, that will be transacted between the city and the developer. But we're here to help, you know, sort of project manager.
Thank you.
Actually, I have one quick question. I know. Everything is, this is a big, more to come. But you know, you mentioned two hundred units. Is there talks of it being bigger at any point in time, given, you know, where it's such a prime spot? That, you know, you're, we're not going to have many bites of the apple for something like this right on the train station?
Yeah, and I believe that two hundred is about two hundred and two, and I think that's the maximum allowable density based on the, the lot size. So they're, they're maximizing what they can over there.
But should we fact, anyway, I think it's worth considering with the text amendment of that changing or. Considering the lot, you know, if it's worth to put more into a spot, a very unique spot like this. Steve, I don't know if that's more to you or to Brian, but. Just something to consider. We're not going to get many shots at the apple of something right on the train station like this, like right across the street.
I'd say Brian and I can chat offline and see if there, you know, I don't know if there's any appetite on the developer's part to do so, or if they're just. For other, other reasons, they can't be, go beyond that, but we, we can explore, sure.
Cool. Thank you.
Oh, no, I mentioned too, and I apologize, is that sixty parking spaces that are being taken are being replaced as part of the deal. So there's not going to be no net decrease in commuter parking. Sorry.
Um, Brian, are the parking spaces going to be replaced? Inside that building that's below the dotted line?
Yeah, so it'll be in the total building footprint, but it'll be at grade with where it currently is. There's some topography there that allows for a direct connection coming from the station place into here. So the second level technically will be the commuter parking, but they'll be replaced in the building.
And who would be managing that parking if it's, you know, part of the train station parking or?
Yeah, so Spinnaker will technically manage it, but the parking authority is planning to enforce it. It's similar to the deal, I guess they just did it over at East Norwalk.
In the Crown and Broome? Okay, thank you.
Uh, any other questions? If not, is, is there a motion to approve this?
I make the motion right here.
Oh, wait a minute. Hi, hi, it's JJ. I just signed on.
Oh, sorry, JJ.
No, no, no worries. I'm sorry for my tardiness. I know I missed all of the presentation. But Brian, can you just let, can you just indicate whether or not this building is? These apartments are for rental or are they for purchase?
They're for rental.
Okay, and so I, I mean, I, I, I just see the one screen, you know, that has the, the flat layout. And I was hoping that there would be some buildings. Coming up that would be, that would provide. An opportunity to purchase in the South Norwalk area or this new development going on. So if this one is for rental, is there anything in the pipeline that would be for purchase?
Nothing that we're currently working on. I mean, we're working on only a couple of projects though, so I don't know what else might be out there. Steve might be able to talk better to that.
Yeah, I, every time I speak with people in South Norwalk, the, you know, the number one thing that I hear, I mean, I hear a lot of things, but. You know, that there's all these, you know. Luxury rentals going up, high rent, you know, rentals going up. But nothing, you know, that is affordable or that is a pathway to homeownership for first-time homeowners. And so particularly around the train station. It was said to me that, you know, instead of creating this whole focal point, this whole zone for, you know. People who are renting, you know, like, you know, for three years, maybe five years and then move on. So you have this kind of transient situation, you know, it would be nice to see something where people can buy. And can be encouraged to stay in the area and grow with the area.
Yeah, it's, it's a good, good question, a good point. I, I, I'm not aware of any. I think this project and the only other. Significant project in South Norwalk at the moment is the Webster Street Lot Proposal. I don't think there's anything.
But that's, that's for rent too. Those are rentals as well.
There's nothing else. Yeah, I'm not aware of any other projects beyond that. And I think your point's good, but, and would be, is a good. Discussion point for the Affordable Housing Study as well.
We would like to see more diversity in this area as far as building options, apartment options.
I, I. Yeah, looking at the.
I think we all, we all would. I'm sorry, I, did I cut you off?
No, no, just to JJ's point, the draft. Resolution, the second one, and I think I've seen this a few places to sort of. Speak to why we would approve. These projects is. Promote diverse housing types, and it lists a bunch of different housing types, but. I've only been seeing the rentals. As the one of them.
Well, the thing you have to also, go, go ahead, Steve.
No, I was just going to say, there's, there are some other factors that are really beyond the city's control with this. A, it's the, it's market-driven and B, the lending on the condominiums. And Brian might know more about that than I do. I mean, but just from what I heard, it's very hard to lend on. The condominium projects. It's just that there's more difficulties in that arena. You know, and I think it's a little bit, some of it's a little bit beyond zoning because we really can't dictate the ownership piece of it. It's beyond what our ability to regulate.
And the other thing I was going to add is there's studies that show that increase of all housing, even if it's high-end, does decrease. Or make things more affordable throughout the market. I'm happy to share a bunch of those that just came out. Surveying all, all around the country.
Well, the, the, the impression that I've been getting is that it makes, it makes, it is scarce. It, it decreases the amount, you know, like landlords. Get on the bandwagon and say, oh, I can get this much more for an apartment that's not, that's not even upgraded. And so it makes affordable apartments scarce, not more. It doesn't increase the amount, it decreases the amount. Because everybody wants to get on a bandwagon to make a high profit.
Yeah, one thing I can say, what Steve just mentioned in terms of the overall housing planning that's going to be going on, both in terms of the Affordable Housing Plan. But also bringing in ULI to do a sort of supply-demand analysis. Effectively look at how many renter, rental units you need to accommodate the market, and how many ownership units you need to accommodate the market. Is definitely part of the discussion, not only here, but for Webster, it was part of here. And I think what we're trying to do is identify homeownership strategies in the, the whole of the portfolio versus, you know, going on a project-by-project basis. As Steve was talking about, you know, the zoning can't really dictate ownership models. Involved in that, but I think it is a very important conversation. I think that's something we just talked about at the Community Advisory Committee we set up for Webster, so. We're aware of it, and I think, I think it's something that we, you know, need to continue talking about. We will continue to talk about.
Yeah, talking is great, but how about some action?
Fair enough. And that's what we're going to be working on, hopefully with you.
Thank you.
Lou, if I might, if I might share something, JJ, I've been on that bandwagon myself. And there hasn't been any new condominium stock in Norwalk for many years, with the exception of that complex on Winfield Street. From what I understand from a developer, the banks. Are not as prone to lending for condominiums as they are for rentals at the moment. And the developers. Have to meet a higher threshold. For projects that are condominium, and I, I won't go into all of the details. But again, that might be a good thing for the Planning and Zoning Commission to get more information on why. People, developers are just building rental units as opposed to, or the vast majority, at least that we're seeing in Norwalk. Are for rent instead of for sale. Because I agree, we need new condominium stock as well.
I think we, we need to move on from this discussion because it's, it's, it's pulling us away from. The action we're taking. We have a motion to approve a resolution. Can I have a second? To that? And then let's also pull up that resolution.
That's second.
Okay. Nick has seconded. A little bit larger, Brian, thank you. This was, this was all part of our package.
Again, this is, this is not the project. This is just the eight twenty-four piece, which is just the, the sale of the land, just to. Make sure that's clear. They'll be back in front of the commission. Once, maybe twice with different facets of the project.
Did we hear what the sale price is?
Four point six million dollars.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Are there any further questions before we go to a vote? All right, if not, Steve, let's do a roll call on this.
Certainly, Ms. Jordan Byer.
Uh, let me make it clear, this is a vote in favor. Resolution.
Oh, you're, you're muted, JJ. JJ, you're muted.
I abstain.
Uh, Ms. Tabashnik?
Yes.
Mr. Cantor?
Yes.
Mr. Muschak?
Yes.
And Mr. Rowena was abstaining. Ms. Langgallis, I mean, excuse, was. Thank you. Mr. Patches?
Yes.
Am I missing somebody? Besides Mr. Shulman? Mr. Shulman, I guess I'll call on you.
Yes.
Okay.
All right. Let's move on to the second item on, on our agenda. Twenty twenty-three dash twenty-two SPR. Marissa and Jonas Everett's. Two seventeen West Norwalk Road, converge, conversion of existing structure. Into a detached accessory dwelling unit? Mr. and Mrs. Everett's, would you?
Hi, hello, Mr. Chairman. And members of the board, thank you for taking your time to, to hear our case. We are relatively new owners of two seventeen West Norwalk Road, and there is. An existing unit. In, in an outbuilding that is set up. To be, there's very little that needs to be done to, to. Turn it into a usable ADU, and we would like to move forward with that.
Okay. Steve or Brian, staff comments on this?
Yeah, so it's an existing accessory structure on the property. It complies with all of our minimum setbacks regarding ADUs. So it's really just converting the existing space into an accessory dwelling unit. So this is kind of the second one that we've seen where there's an existing structure just being converted. In terms of use. So all setbacks appear to be complied with, all height requirements. The, the structure won't exceed seven hundred square feet, which complies, and they have plenty of room for the third parking space, so. No issues on staff's end.
Okay. Any comments from commission members?
Is, is there a drawing? Or?
Yeah.
Wondering?
Yeah, I'll share. Unless Jonas, unless you have it.
Uh, yeah, I can share it if, if I can share my screen here.
Sure.
Brian or Steve, is this the first? Project that if this is passed, that will be approved on the ADUs?
No, this is the sec, this is the second, JJ.
Okay, thank you.
Um, no, that was, that was Tammy who was speaking.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, no worries. There's something, there's something wrong with my camera, so.
Isn't that right there?
No, yeah.
Hey, Jonas, I can pull it up.
You sure? Yeah, sorry, Brian, it was having.
That's okay. Yeah, so here's. This is the existing structure. So there's like a.
Front-facing view.
Yeah. I know you guys have a, there's a, a part of the zoning regs, there's some landscaping requirements, there's, there's. Plenty of landscaping that naturally exists between them and the prop, neighboring property.
Is, is that a walkway I see? Um, it's gravel?
That is, that's our driveway.
Oh, that's, oh, that's your driveway?
Yes.
Okay, and the parking for this ADU is where?
Yeah, I'll pull that up on another, JJ.
So that's the backside?
No, they're not saying that.
Oh.
So here's the structure over here, if you'd see my mouse, JJ. And so the parking is essentially going to all be located. Really anywhere behind the front setbacks where they can park, so there's.
Is, is that dedicated parking for the ADU? Is that shared?
So the ADU, yeah, the ADU require its own parking space, but there's not like, it doesn't have to be a specific spot.
And it's on top of three garage bays, like a three-car garage. So technically, there are three parking spaces there, if we were calling them parking spaces.
Right.
It's our residence, so.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, are there any other questions? Steve, do we have to take formal action on this?
Yes, you, you do need to vote. It's, it's a site plan approval, so yeah.
Okay, so just site plan approval. Is there a motion for a site plan approval? Okay, Tammy Langgallis has made the motion. Uh, I know several people just spoke, but I didn't catch. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't catch that either.
Hector Patches, I can second.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, Hector. My apologies. Old ears as well as old eyes. We have, we have a, a motion, we have a second. And here's the resolution, very simple, straightforward. Okay. Any, any further questions before we vote on this matter? Okay. I think we can do this with a show of hands. All those in favor?
Um, my video isn't working, so I'm just going to raise my hand on the computer if you could see anything.
We can see you, JJ.
Your video is working.
We can see you, JJ.
My video's working? Okay.
It's important you know that.
Yeah, be careful.
It looked, it looked to me like everybody's hand was raised, so I don't need to even ask if. Any negative votes, it's approved unanimously.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your time.
Brian, while we're on ADUs, are we see, are you seeing any increase of attached ADUs coming to the office?
We have. Seen. I would say no real significant change from the previous regulations. From my knowledge, I think we've done one attached since passing the regs, which probably could have been done under the old regs. So no real significant changes.
Thank you.
Okay, then let's move on to. Our primary business this evening. The proposed draft zoning regulations and zoning map. Twenty twenty-three dash nineteen R slash M. Planning and Zoning Commission. Zoning Text Amendment for Complete Rewrite of the Zoning Regulations. And the Zoning Map Amendment. For complete rezoning of the entire city. Uh, this is a continuation of our review, this time with the consultant, TPU DC. And attorney, Mike, Mike Brandt. And Jessica, are you going to begin?
Yes, thank you for having us back, and I think this is pretty kind of just for us to answer any questions you have. So, um, I know Steve sent us some points, so we can kind of go through. What we've heard so far, or if you guys just want to start with questions and topics. Steve, how did you want to do it, or Louis, how did, how did you guys want to do it?
Why don't, why don't we, why don't we start with the materials that Steve has shared with you? And when that's complete, we'll, we'll move into open questions.
Mr. Shulman, I, I should say, we do have Attorney Sapienza from the Law Department is also joining us as well.
Oh, good, okay.
Great. Okay, so, you know, one of the first things that Steve had mentioned was still. Wanting to talk over the whole one building per lot building site. Kind of consideration. And that's really that, we do that, so like all buildings and sites need to meet the standards. Essentially, a building site is just an unsubdivided lot. So when somebody comes in with a site plan. If they don't want to subdivide it into lots but want multiple buildings, they would just show on that site plan that there are multiple building sites. And then each building site would have to meet the standards of the code. And that's, yeah, the code is really set up on what can happen on a lot building site and what happens at the frontage. So it's ensuring that even if somebody wants multiple buildings on a site, that each building is really going to meet the code's standards. For that kind of good pedestrian environment. So that's why that's set up that way. Um, and feel free to.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, for like, to clarify, so like, there's been a couple of projects that have come in the city where. For example, there is the apartment building that was built on Westport Avenue where they had multiple, like, primary structures on the same lot, like they had an apartment building. With a self-storage facility. And so the concern was if there's only one structure permitted per lot, you wouldn't be able to do a pro, project like that going forward, so. As Jessica just explained, something like that could go forward based on how the regs are written, just kind of.
That's correct. Um, so the next topic was on additional sustainability measures. We heard about wanting more of those in the code and having some stricter ones. Steve asked us, you know, where else have we done it, and how much have we, we put in other places? And I told him, I was like, you guys are really the strongest actually so far that we've, that we've done it. So we usually find that it. People want it in the beginning and it gets talked about a lot, but by the time it gets into public draft even. That there's just been pushback on actually making regulations for it. Um, so that's kind of what we found, but we can include kind of anything that you guys want to include. Some of the things we've seen though are like smart street standards and, and items like that, that might be better suited for a different document. Because I know the street standards aren't within this code. There is incentive bait, a lot of cities have done it incentive-based. So that's another way to go to is not necessarily requiring it outright, but doing it as an incentive. And that seems to be kind of the way that other cities have to do it in order to get it passed. Um, and then some items might be better addressed in a building code too, like green building techniques, maybe a better place in the building code than necessarily in the zoning. Bill, did you have anything you wanted to add on sustainability? But we're happy to, to, if you guys have ideas, to, to plug them in. Um, and be as strong with the language as you all want.
Oh, and one thing I didn't want to say, we, we looked at the idea of carbon neutrality as a, as a piece of the zoning code. Uh, in response to this question. And I can only find. And I can only find one code in the country, and it was in New York City, that, that has the concept of carbon neutrality in it. I think it's just, it just go, it's going so far. It's so much further than zoning usually goes. Yeah, that it's, it's, it's just, I think it may just reach one step too far to, to, to try to roll into your code. We, I think we tell Steve early on that just sustainability provisions generally, you know, you can put, you know, really, really rigorous, for instance, stormwater management provisions in, and then shall them all the way, you know, you gotta do them, it's not a should, it's not a may. But every single time we've ever done that in any code, once the development community has it in front of them, they start a pretty strong pushback on it. And, 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 you know, you end up having to, to take all your mandatory provisions and take them back to permissive as opposed to mandatory.
Jessica, actually, this, this, this discussion leads to something else for me, which is more of an administrative issue. We're going to have a new, an entirely new code. And particularly with issues like sustainability, green infrastructure, that sort of thing. Those are things that are constantly changing. As, as, as more is known, as there's further development on these issues. How, and this is a general question. How easy is it within the new draft code to integrate changes? You know, like that, as, as science improves, we learn more. Is it reasonably easy to, to do that, or is there, is this written in such a way that it would make it more difficult?
It's, I mean, you asked Jessica, but I'll just jump in and answer. It'd be the same as your regular process as a zoning code amendment every time you, you were to do that. It wouldn't, you wouldn't be able to do it at an administrative level. If you've got requirements in there, you're going to end up having to amend your zoning code. It'd just be a step beyond an administrative sort of function.
Okay, please, I apologize for interrupting.
No, no, yeah, interrupt us as we go through topics, feel free to kind of interrupt, so we're not, yeah.
But New York is doing it, right?
I'm sorry.
New York is doing the carbon neutrality, correct?
I think that's what I, that's, that was a real quick look this morning, and that's what it looked like. Um, I was just gonna say, the typical sustainability provisions that people have put into zoning codes thus far, they, it's like, if you have a mix of land uses, it ends up reducing all mobile use and, and, you know, it, it, it has an environmental sustainability impact there. If you have, you know, to reduce parking requirements, that's another thing to kind of get you away from being all dependent, therefore not being as, as sustainable. Modernizing the street standards is another thing that, that, that takes you there, making sure you got connectivity everywhere. But the, sort of the biggest one that people seem like they've, they've kind of gotten over the hurdle of, oh my gosh, what do you mean sustainability? It seems like stormwater management is a thing that has probably been the biggest sustainability adopted item. But even in a lot of places that allow different alternative methods of stormwater management, it, it, a lot of times, it's not really an alternative. It, it ends up being, yeah, you can do it, but you gotta do the conventional stuff too. And, and so it ends up being duplicative, so it's kind of like, what developer would elect to do that, to do it twice? And so there's, you know, there's, there's a good bit of, I'm not sure that like, all of the engineering practice has gotten on, on board with alternative stormwater provisions, but a lot of codes have them in there, and so I think that, you know, that, that's the, the primary focus, other than what building needs to use, those typical things that are built into a form-based code.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
For the record, Mark Brandt, I'd just like to follow up on that. Here in Connecticut, it's fairly, and prevalent, almost ubiquitous, to have low-impact development, or, or, or others, sustainable stormwater management in zoning regulations. And I think the reason why you see that here in Connecticut is because years ago, Deep developed the Stormwater Quality Manual, which, which addresses all of that. So it becomes fairly simple for a local zoning regulation to simply say, "Stormwater management shall be in accordance with the Stormwater Quality Manual." And when, in that one sentence, you've incorporated pages and pages and pages of criteria. The other thing, DEP did work with a private engineering firm to develop some sample low-impact development provisions for both wetlands regulations, zoning regulations. I did draft those, and those are available through Deep or through me. And those also, they're, they're easy to implement because you can, you can reference a, a, a certain body of documentation. I would say that things like the green roof and, and those sorts of carbon neutrality things are, are still new, and I have not seen them in any Connecticut zoning regulations either. And I think one of the challenges there is that although, although organizations like the Green Building Council are beginning to publish criteria, and they're, they're working at that, zoning has to be kind of black or white in a lot of ways, so you have, you have, you have two choices. You can either say, as a criteria, when the commission reviews a special permit or a site plan, "The commission shall review carbon neutrality and seek to maximize carbon neutrality," something very general like that. Or it has to be very specific. "All buildings larger than X square feet shall have green roofs." You know, "All sites with more than thirty parking spaces shall," and that begins to get really tricky.
Why?
Is there a?
Why, though? PA twenty-one, twenty-nine makes it pretty clear that we can now take sustainability and, and things related to climate change directly into account for our zone, so.
Absolutely.
It may be a function of new, but I want to be clear that we have it in our rights to do, and it is a legal thing. It may be a advice from being thinking about whether we want to be on the cutting edge or not, but it is not something, I just want to clarify, make sure I'm understanding correctly, attorney, is like, we have this within our legal purview to include in our.
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
Yes, I think you do. And by the way, the other thing that, that's, that is specific to you is that for many years now, eight dash two has required any municipality that is adjacent to or drains into Long Island Sound, which most of them do, to consider impacts of hypoxia and other impacts on a Long Island sound. So yeah, but you, you, I, I'm not worried about the legal authority. I was more responding to this, this, that, that in terms of stormwater quality, it's, it's really almost universal, the towns now require that. That LED is also really out there, becoming more common. And this other stuff is new, but yeah, it's, it's within your, your jurisdiction. I don't have any doubt about that.
And in these, in these draft, this draft, when you talk about the general versus the very, very specific, it looks like it's leaning more towards the specific with sort of an opt-out, saying that unless the applicant demonstrates that it's unfeasible, if there's twenty-five thousand square feet or more, it has to have a certain portion that's a green roof or a blue roof, and if they say it's unfeasible, we can get a third-party review to sort of verify that. Am I understanding that correctly?
I, I believe that's in the text, yes. I was getting some correct me on that. I, I think I saw that.
See, that is correct.
So we're sort of leaning more on the specific side. In, in those two choices, what'd you say?
I'm not specific.
Yeah, yeah, for solar, but for some of the other ones, not. I think it, it depends on which sustainability measure. For solar and green roofs, there are more, or sorry, maybe not for solar, I'm sorry, just green roofs, it is more specific. And then for like, items like natural drainage too, it refers back to, as attorney was saying, the other manuals, and then for shading of glazing and stuff, that was written less specific. Just allowing for it, saying, "If you were gonna do it, here are ways to do it." Just because at this point, we weren't sure how strong you all, and generally, we say, "Don't put any shoulds in the zoning." That is generally our, our, our standpoint, but that was kind of one nod to saying, hey, we know you guys want to put in some sustainability, it's just how strong do you want to be at this point? But shoulds can become shalls, so.
And, and as I said, it can be, it, it, there's a medium ground between the, the shall and the should. I, I agree, you never put should in zoning regulation. But it could, it could make it a criteria for review, that one of the things you're reviewing is sustainability and the carbon neutrality. That can be just, the like, just like you review, you, you review traffic. You don't say no more than X cars per hour, you don't do that, but it's one of the criteria you consider. You look at neighborhood character. You, these are all things that you consider reviewing an application. And certainly sustainability and carbon neutrality can be among those criteria that you evaluate.
I have a question, Steve, for you. Right now, am I correct in assuming that the stormwater issues are handled by the WPCA and not by us?
The, the, oftentimes how it's structured is the standard could be within the zoning regulations, but then like, the technical review and the impacts are assessed by like, engineering or somebody like that, who has the expertise to review that. I'm happy to reach out to New York City Planning and make a connection there on what they've done and who's implemented that and how it's worked and why. And, you know, I can, I can't promise anything, but maybe I can get somebody to come and chat, or at least we could do like a daytime Zoom if people were interested in that as well.
That'd be awesome.
Okay, let's go back to Jessica.
Okay. There's nothing else on sustainability. We'll move on to the next one. We can always come back to it, of course. So the next one was, we heard quite a few questions kind of on the naming of the districts and how that all comes about, so I wanted to share my screen if I can and just talk through that a little more again. So, can you all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so form-based codes are typically set up around transect zones. And we've taken that kind of general concept, and we just call them community districts here instead of transect zones, just because we found that the term transect, people are like, what is that? So community district just is a little more of a friendlier term, but it's the same kind of idea, so. Norwalk starts with your CD three districts, because, so CD one and CD two are more natural areas, where you'd have a lot of open space and very little development, and because Norwalk is built out, you're really starting in CD three. And those are your suburban districts where buildings are set back from the street, like older neighborhoods with larger houses on larger lots. So that's where a lot of your current residential districts went into CD three, because that was kind of how they were currently set up. Your CD four is your general urban district or transect too. And that's where you have smaller houses, you start to add in some mix of residential building types, such as townhouses or small multifamily. This is where you can start to add in a corner store. And then CD five is your urban center or your downtown area. And then special districts are reserved for things that don't fit neatly into one of the character or one of the community districts. So that would be, that's why you have your, your special district industrial or your special district marine commercial. So that's really the kind of concept that we used for setting up the districts and how we do it in other cities as well, is really this, this idea of going from your most natural to your most urban. Oh, go ahead.
I'm sorry, Jessica, I'm sorry. There are, there are beyond CD five though, right? Is there more like a?
There's a CD six, yeah, and, and two, like, these will be different, so. Like, New York City's CD five is going to be a lot different than your CD five. So it's really, it's calibrated to the city that you're in as well. So keep that in mind. It never goes over, like, the transect only goes one through six, and it's just calibrated then to the city based on what, through the metrics of the code.
Another point here is, you'll notice that we, there are Norwalk specific, more or less, subtypes of some of these districts, like you've got the CD three L and the CD three S.
Yep.
And those were crafted for, for specific application in Norwalk, but the, but the same general concept that CD three is predominantly a residential district still applies. It's just, it's, it's just refined a little bit more for Norwalk.
Yeah. Yeah, and you'll have your, your W districts too, so your CD four W and your CD five W, because those are water. So that's where you start adding in kind of subtypes of districts, but, but the general idea of CD three, like Bill said, being residential, CD four being kind of a mix of residential and some small-scale commercial, and CD five being really more your, your most intense commercial or downtown areas.
And I guess another basic premise is that the entire transect is based on, Jessica started touching on this, is based on a continuum of development intensity. And so that, in, you know, instead of saying, you know, well, this is going to be big lots, and this can be small lots, or whatever, that it's, it's it's how intense is the development. You notice that in, in the, in the illustrations above this, you, you start seeing more and more development as you get to the higher district. And it's the, as far as form-based or character-based codes that are being done around the country, it's, this protocol ends up being the way that they're, they're being done consistently. Just as consistently as in the old days with conventions of zoning, that every district that was primarily residential started with an R. It was just a different naming protocol.
So, and I know one question came too about the CD, you know, because we also have Civic District, which is abbreviated as CB, and then something in Article Three, I'll stop sharing here, but called Commercial District, but when we use the term CD, it only means community district. So you can have residential types of community districts, you can have commercial types of community CD, it only is defined as a community district. And we've, we looked through too, and the term residential district comes throughout the code when you're, when you're referring to it, but it's more of a grouping term. It's just saying like, of these CDs, these are your residential district, community districts. Although, there was a lot of district talk right there, but. So that's, that's why, and then Civic District is abbreviated as CV.
Yeah. As inveter.
Yeah, so, so yeah, so anytime CD, it's just going to be community district. Then let me, let me see what the other.
Yeah, I think just going on, on that, like, I think it'll take, it just takes a little time to get used to, because it's different, but, I mean, for example, like, at least now you know, if you're in a CD three, you're in a primarily residential zone. If you're in a CD four, you're in a mixed-use zone, and if you're in a CD five, you're in another mixed-use zone, whereas, you know, right now, if you're in a central business district versus the South Norwalk Business District versus Reed Putnam, you really have no idea what any of that means unless you look at the code, so.
That was a good synopsis. Thank you, Brian. So, let me see on the. Yeah, I was looking at the other. Were there any other questions, I guess, before we move on to the next topic? Any other questions on kind of the naming of the districts or kind of the, the concept behind it?
Hi, Tammy here. I definitely had a lot, have or had a lot of questions about that, and your little graph that you just had on the table, I'm looking for it in the book, and I don't see it. I thought I saw it before, but I don't, but I, I, I think that is actually helpful. book and I don't see it, I thought I saw it before, but I don't, but I, I, I think that is actually helpful. Um, but I still think it's very confusing, I was on a call with some people that have already taken a look at this, and two of them were architects that are well-versed in different zones type lingo, if you will, and they were very confused by it, so, uh, I think.
I mean, specifically, what were they confused by?
Like this, the CD three SL, you know, all the different abbreviations that were, that are being applied to different neighborhoods, like CD three L, CDS, uh, you know, the, the different namings and really what they meant and why, because it was kind of mixing commercial and residential and mixing single family and multifamily.
Uh, there, well, there's a, there's one also basic concept of character-based zoning, and that is the mix of uses, and that goes back, that, that's what we're talking about in the sustainability part of it. Um, each of the CD zones, CD districts, um, it has a formal name, just like each of your present districts has a formal name, even though it's triple A, double A, and, and, and honestly, the, the triple A, double A, single A, triple B, uh, all that stuff is, is, I mean, it's, it's really an arbitrary assignment of some officials to, it doesn't explain at all where you are. Uh, but it, what if, the, the easy thing about the, the character-based codes is that you, once you see a three, you know immediately it's predominantly single-family residential. And it's, it's like an always, um, and you see a four, and you know the four is always a transitional district between single-family residential and the, and the real more urban setting of the CD five. Um, and, and we've added the, the, the S to your, uh, CD three, the one that's CD three S, and you need to help me here.
Yeah.
Because I, I think I know what I'm getting to say, but you know it better.
No, I can, uh.
It, you know, it's a, it's, it says, this is only single-family residential, because y'all had some single-family conventional districts that allowed the duplex, right?
Yeah, so it, that's where, um, so your CD three L and CD three S, so CD three L is your, your CD three larger lots. Um, just because you all had so many different types of residential districts, we couldn't just create a CD three. Because your residential districts were so varied, we couldn't just say, oh, well, everybody now who was in triple A, double A, B, C, you're all going to be CD three, like, it just, that wouldn't have worked. So that's where you get the CD three L, which is your, your larger lots, and your CD three S, which is your single family, and your CD three, which allows for single and two-family.
Yeah.
So that's why you end up with like C, three different, um, CD three districts.
Jessica, I apologize for interrupting, Steve, I see you have your hand, you have your hand.
I was waiting patiently, that's fine, she can, Jessica can finish her thought.
I didn't know that, I thought he would just literally tell him his hi.
He's got his hand raised. No, go, go ahead.
I was just going to say, I think, I would agree with Brian, it's, it's, you know, having looked at zoning codes and, you know, and my attorney Brants is, would, has booked it a lot more than I have, um, but it, it's not the same from town to town, it's not the same from state to state, um, it's different and it's something, it's going to take a little bit getting used to for people, if, you know, they, they, I, 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 my experience has been since I got to, to Norwalk was that, you know, we're working with the, a lot of the architects and attorneys that it, they were used to navigating the old code, no matter, I, for me, when I looked at it, it was you know, just like the most horribly constructed document I'd ever worked with, because it just didn't lay out well, it didn't function well. It doesn't coordinate between topics and between chapters well. So this is new, so it, it's going to take a little while for somebody who hasn't used it before to understand and how, how they're going to implement it, it's going to be a little learning curve for everybody, and I think what we talked about doing was, say it gets adopted, uh, you know, September, October, it, maybe it's not effective till December or January, so you've got two or three more months to get used to it before you have to start actually applying.
To that point, I think I've started to get used to some of it. Um, and I just wanted to check my understanding if this is correct, um, so, um, and district, district three were largely originally B and Z in the East Norwalk Village Zone. And it looks like particularly with the current B districts, they are getting primarily put into CD three and three S. I asked Steve sort of for a breakdown of where those Bs went. He said the Bs, I'm talking overall, not just district three, went thirty-three percent to CD three S, so they're still single-family but small lots. Fifty-nine percent to CD three, so they could be single-family or two-family, and seven percent to CD four. So they can now pretty much be most things except for in a state, CD four is where the multifamily starts, I guess. My first question is, am I correct that CD four is where multifamily starts? Do I have that right?
Yes, yep, CD four allows townhouses and small multifamily, yep.
Okay, so, and I've heard, um, for different things from different neighbors, but I've heard from some of my neighbors um, concerned that, that, that their B zones are now going to allow multifamily, um, and I've been trying to clarify, you know, if you're ending up with something that starts with three, it's not multifamily, it's two-family, and there's a difference between those two.
Yep.
But I also asked, uh, Steve, how many two-family residences we have right now in the B zones to get a sense of like how big of a change that would be, he said we have three hundred and nine two-family parcels in the B zones, at least that, like, are sort of legal and we know of. Um, so, that really allows for like, I think a good amount of more uh, flexibility, but at a smaller scale, they're not going to small apartment buildings. It would be, if anything, just two families, right?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, just wanted to say that out, make sure I understood it, thank you.
Sure, and that zone, if you look at the building typology that's allowed, that, I think that's one thing, I think people just haven't really looked at and implemented yet, if you look at the allowed building typology in that zone, it's going to show you what you can build. As, and it's not going to allow you to build those apartment buildings. Um, we could talk about this more later too, you know, Brian and I have been looking at this, because this question's come up in a few different other parts of the city. Uh, and there's areas that have allowed, um, two-family as of right for a long time. And in the majority of those streets, they're still single-family, so I think a lot of that's going to be market-driven, I think, to, to, to what JJ was talking about earlier, we, we, we think one big selling point of allowing more two-family into those zones is it allows for homeownership opportunities with the two-family, so right now those zones allow ADUs, but the ADU doesn't allow for separate ownership, where the two-family will allow for that. And I think that the two-family will actually lead to more uniform development as opposed to a single-family plus a detached ADU in the backyard, it's, it's less impactful, it's more known. Um, I, I think it's, it, overall down the road, and, and these are super long-term changes, because you're not going to have an entire street all of a sudden tear down their single-family house and put up a duplex or a townhouse, it, it's not going to function that way, it's, it's just the development pattern the city's seen for the last forty years, the market's going to drive it, and it'll be incremental.
Yeah, I think the other thing that TPDC added that Jessica and Bill had done, which I think is one of the coolest things is in the CD four zone, they actually allow you to do with the townhouses, is you can actually take a lot now and build townhouses on it, and then actually split those lots into those eighteen-foot-wide lots, which allows you to actually purchase the land that you, you know, so that's just one more homeownership component that gets added in, so it's, I think, I thought that was a really a cool thing to do.
And I would just say, just parenthetically, you, uh, were selling yourself short, um, you're sort of starting to understand that, you nailed every single thing you said.
Well, it gave me quite a headache, so I'm glad.
All right, Jessica, back to you.
Okay, um, so next item, um, was parking maximums, so there actually is a provision in the code. Um, it's, uh, four point three point one two or twelve B eight, um, and I can send that to Steve too. Um, but I just wanted to point that out, that does say that, um, does limit the number of parking spaces to ten percent more than the number that is in the parking table, requirement table. So essentially that is a part, it is a page, ooh, let me, I can find that real quick, um.
It is much easier for us to find things if you say the page number rather than.
Yeah, I should have, I should have had that ready.
Or have it up on the screen.
I'll, I'll point out that, um, page numbers are a new addition to the regulations, we do not have those in the existing regs, so.
Oh.
I think it's page two sixty-eight.
Welcome to the twenty-first century.
It's.
Six eight, I think.
Seventeen fifty.
It's a two seventy-two, I believe.
Okay.
Yeah, page two seventy-two, um, it's right under the table of parking reductions near mass transit facilities. Um, it's right under that.
So, so it's subpar F eight is the one that carries it.
Yeah. So, so that's the one that essentially limits your, your, it, it puts a cap on your parking to ten percent more than what's in the table, but then it also says within CD five that you can't be more than the minimum.
Uh, I recall, uh, and I don't know the percentage, but, um, when we were looking at what will be our newest supermarket, uh, they were looking for considerably more parking uh, than we required, whether it was ten percent more, I don't recall, Brian, Steve, or Steve, maybe one of you did. Um, and they indicated they needed that, uh, in order to, um, make, uh, their facility work. Uh, they even went so far as to suggest that, uh, uh, there might be a problem, um, securing funding, uh, if they couldn't get, uh, uh, the parking spaces that they indicated they needed. How did, how, 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 if at all, can we deal with that, with this regulation?
It, I, I'll say that it's something that, that larger footprint slash regional or national chains always say, you didn't say whether it was regional or national, but it's, they always say it. Um, they will also be the parking lots that you see, probably even in the holiday season, will have massive numbers of vacancies in them. Um, and to the point where, uh, some of the ones here in, in our town, uh, there's an enclosed shopping mall here, some department stores, massive parking fields, and they were, it, this was, they were built back in the, uh, the, the mall was built back in the early eighties. Um, they have resorted now to leasing their parking to car dealerships for their inventory. That's how much extra they have, and it stays that way, they, it's not like they only lease it in non-peak times, you can go over there before Christmas and at least half the parking field will be rented, I mean, will be leased out as inventory, uh, for the, for the car dealerships. So it is something they say, I've never seen anybody walk away from doing a project in the city based on any of that. Um, so, you know, that's, that, that's my take on it anyway. And that's the reason we put, um, you know, maximum in, in there, because it's, um, at, at some point, it just, there needs to be a reasonable cap on unlimited amounts of parking.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
For the record, Mark Brants, I, I, I want to concur with that. Um, and I've seen a number of Connecticut zoning regulations that have, uh, parking maximums. Uh, I think it's becoming more common now, uh, I've also observed the, the, the big chains want these vast parking fields, I think part of it is, um, that they, 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 they want somebody driving by to see lots of space and not feel it's crowded, maybe that's it. Um, but the other thing that you also see, depending on the user, is what they show on their site plan as parking. Once they open, ends up being outside storage.
That's right.
Okay, and they say they need for parking, but in fact, it's not for parking at all, and then now your zoning officer is endlessly chasing them because they're storing inventory in what's supposed, what they told you would be a parking lot. So, um, I, I've also seen it, and I, and I, and I, and I've also never seen anybody walk away from a deal because, uh, of, of landscaping requirements or parking limitations, or any of the numerous other things that they will tell you will make them walk away.
Yeah, yes, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, too, I think that was one of the reasons we put in the, the regulation about the, uh, solar canopies over the parking, was to, you know, if you're going to, okay, you're going to add some extra parking, but we don't feel it's necessary, but if you're going to do that, we're going to require this instead.
And then, and then you can't store stuff out there.
But that's true too.
I think there was already a provision said you can't store stuff out there, but that never stopped.
And under these regulations, the parking's only for new buildings, is only to be on the side or in the back, right? So there's less of that drive-by to see what's free.
Yep.
True.
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like. I feel like most of the big stores around here, there's always parking except for the Connecticut Avenue Walmart and Home Goods, which I avoid like the plague, so I guess my. No, Costco's great, you got to know how to park there, but like, they're fine, so. I guess what I'm wondering is, I don't know what the numbers are, right, like, Steve, like, off the top of your, does anybody know what the number is of the parking at that Connecticut Walmart Home Goods? So we can make sure that we're not hitting that level of tightness.
See that.
Even to the Home Depot, there is, there is a lot of spaces, but closer to the, let's say, the Home Depot. Uh, yeah, I was just there this weekend, and half of that field is used for, right now, the storage. If you go, uh, closer to the spring, there is like a, a taco place, and there is like, um, couple of RVs that park there, and they've been there for months, and if you go to the Home Depot, like, the second level, it's, uh, it's got a lot of, uh, open space, so it's really interesting when it comes to, to, uh, to parking.
Well, there's also the convenient parking, it's that, not that the amount, it's where people want to park, they want to park, is close to their doors they can possibly get.
Okay.
Okay.
Jessica, moving.
Yep. I have one more question.
On the parking too, oh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, Jessica.
Oh, I was, I was going to switch, so if you were.
Oh, yeah, I still have a, uh, so on parking, I know there were, we've said two places where we're going to take away parking requirements. Are there other places in the city that were sort of on the fringe that you guys were thinking about that made sense? I'd like to evaluate, like, the edge cases as well.
I think, I mean, we always recommend for like all the downtown areas to not require parking, because, um, as Chairman hit on too, it's like, a lot of developments will provide parking if they need it. Um, so you don't need, necessarily need to put in parking minimums, because they're going to provide it if they need it. Um, so we recommend, you know, anywhere where you feel like you can to get rid of those parking minimums.
So Steve, Brian, I think maybe that's something to look at, to see if there's other places we want to consider adding that into.
Uh, sure, I don't see that conversation going very well, but sure.
Welcome to the future.
I have a question, uh, since we're on parking and, and I, the question would be about how it relates to housing costs. Um, I've heard that a structured parking spot is, I, thirty thousand, I don't know if that number's changed with inflation, but like thirty thousand dollars per structured parking space. And that when a apartment building is built, for instance, um, that cost is folded into the cost of the units, and of course makes the housing less affordable. So do you just have an opinion on that, um? Because we have a conflict, you know, we have people that show up at public hearings. As we did recently, we don't have enough parking, obviously, in a spot. It's obvious to them, they don't have enough parking, because everybody has two cars. And then we have other people who say, well, the young people are not, uh, getting driver's licenses, Gen Z is has the lowest car ownership rate in history. And people don't want to have a car, and they don't need it with Uber and, and deliver food delivery, everything else. Uh, they can live without a car and use mass transit, and so, but in terms of the housing costs, do you have a definitive statement about how that makes housing unaffordable, uh, inherently? Because you have to, you know, pay so much money to build parking.
And I think the thirty thousand dollar number may be ten or more off at this point, I, because I heard a forty back nearly ten years ago. Um, and, but I think certainly, if you were, if you have structured parking, you're going to be increasing the cost of, of the, the units, I mean, it's, it's going to be paid for some. You're gonna be increasing the cost of, of the, the units. I mean, it's, it's gonna be paid for somehow and that's how it gets paid for is rolling it into the unit. So it's, it, um, I don't know whether. Where the market demand uh would let you essentially just not have any parking. Um, but I mean, they, you know, people want to have a place to at least put a car. You go to New York City, I know that um, you know, a lot of them don't. And they just, you know, they go ahead and, and battle it out every day and um, you know, in order for the parking places on the street. And so I, I don't, I don't know whether as a practical matter, you could not have a parking, um, that, you know, have parking. For um, a unit, but.
Well, I think as um, like developers too, and I think other cities separate the cost of parking and your unit. So if you want, if they don't have parking requirements, you don't have to provide one per unit. You know, you can rent that parking space separate from the unit. So if you don't need parking, your unit would be less. Um, so that's something too that, that developers have done to, to kind of reduce the cost of units when you, when you don't need that parking.
Mister Chairman. Yeah, let me just add one thing on that, uh, Mark Brants again. Um, I was just thinking of the. I, I represented a developer doing affordable housing, doing eight thirty G affordable housing developments in Milford, Westport. And uh, it's Milford, Westport and Fairfield. And all three of them had parking under the building. And, and yet were able to meet the affordability requirements. Uh, now that's not structured, it's not a parking garage. But it's part, it's, and I think the reason for that is that land costs in Fairfield County are very, very high. And so it, it is worth, uh, if you can get the units, if you can get the density. It's worth that extra cost to uh, to, to have structured parking of some kind or other. What our, our first proposal in, in Westport had two levels of underbuilding parking. Um, and that was denied and sustained by the court, so we returned with a smaller project. Um, but uh, I, I think land cost is a factor. And um, it, it makes it worthwhile for a developer to, to do structured parking if they can get the additional program because of the land cost.
And then not to belabor the point on, on parking, um, and there is some research that goes into that. Your built environment sort of shapes the actions that you take. So if you, you know, if there's no parking provided at a building. Um, you are either gonna be a person who seeks out that type of development, meaning you do not want to drive. So you're gonna find somewhere to live where you don't need to drive. Or if you like to drive and you live somewhere by necessity that doesn't have parking, you are eventually probably gonna learn how to function without driving.
Yeah, I, I to add to that, I said that about uh, two thirty East Avenue. Way back a few years ago in that hearing that. If somebody wanted a suburban lifestyle, they would not live on the northeast corridor within thirty feet of the tracks. They would go live in a more suburban apartment complex across town like Norden Avalon, let's say. Uh, and uh, and that they, and that people would self-select. And I don't know if that's panned out. I never went back to the study or anything, but. You know, there, the market does, I mean, of course, of course, with a housing shortage. People sometimes are forced to move into places that are just available and convenient, but not, might be their best option, but. Uh, certainly do, you're right, I mean, people with limited parking. Will uh select that on purpose uh for various, might be more affordable or whatever, but anyway, thanks. This is all. It's going off the track a little bit, but these are very important conversations to have in this context.
It all pertains. Um, there were actually two other points I noticed in the questions too um about parking that we can touch on since we're, we're on parking. Um, so parking in the rear side rear, how does that happen with redevelopment? So I think that goes into the non-conformity provisions in Article One. So it's um, once you trigger that non-conformity provision, um, you have to kind of come into compliance. So, but as long as you are non-conforming, you know, you, you can, um, you can still park where you want on the site. So, so that's with redevelopment, how that would happen is, is just when they're, when they trigger that non-conforming. You'd have to start. Um, and then um, one other parking thing was actually in the um residential districts. There was uh parking courts um on page sixty-four. Um, so that was. Uh, in, in the C D three, um, this was something we worked with staff on was the parking in the front setback issue. Um, and uh, I know Steve worked a lot on this, um, and the way that was resolved was. To have, allow for these parking courts in front yards for existing lots if you met certain conditions. So it's saying, if you can't at all park in your rear yard. You can possibly on an existing lot have parking in that front setback, provided that it meets all those standards that's in the code.
Mike, I know you've mentioned, I think, something like this before. Does this sort of answer that question?
Uh, partially. Yeah.
Does it not go far enough?
It, uh, well. I've got it, to be honest, I gotta look at it uh closer, uh, but. Yes, it's a conversation we need to have. I mean, when we've got a third of the city with. Non-conforming driveways, uh, you know, you've got a problem and then it can be enforced if you go for. A zoning application to do something on your house and you've got a non-conformity, of course, that red flags. Your property and it discourages uh renovations and discourages, you know, expansions and all the things people want to do with their house. Because it's an obsolete idea that you can't, you know, Darian doesn't enforce parking in front setbacks. It's a different town, obviously, uh, with different kinds of pressures, but. Um, you can have a parking courtyard, you can have a circular driveway. These things were always prevented in Norwalk. To the point of absurdity, uh, I think, uh, and uh. And, and it really did, it really did frustrate people's ability to um fix their house up. You know, because it's town would just follow the rule and say, say, you've got to make your driveway conforming and. Uh, a lot of people just can't. So anyway, um, yes, it goes, it goes far, it goes. For closer to what the ideal is. I'm gonna look at it closer, but thank you for uh, you know, for addressing this.
Steve?
Yeah, yeah, and I won't belabor the point, but I think what we tried to do was, you know, with the idea, if there's gonna be redevelopment. They have to conform to the codes, that the parking would have to be in the side of the rear. Um, but we understand that, you know, someone may never renovate or knock their house down and build new, so. And they may need to add more parking just because of the way families are functioning now, where more people living under one roof. So we tried to provide the ability to have some additional parking in the front yard, provided they met some different standards in terms of landscaping. And, and the type of materials used for that surface. So I think that's what we, we, our goal was when we put that together.
If I may, Lou. I think I, I agree with um Commissioner Mousak that so much of the development. Probably from the nineteen sixties on has a driveway in the front. And then, you know, you have, we have a standard that you have to have a garage on a house, right? And so you'll have to pull into the garage. It's also been talked about where you're not. You're supposed to turn around in your driveway, but then you have too much permeable lot coverage. I mean, there are a lot of things. I think that we're potentially making a conflict with one another. Um. I think in the older neighborhoods, like in parts of East Norwalk, there are. Bungalow style or a farmhouse style and the garage was single car detached in the back. But people don't want detached garages anymore. They want them, but they want their garage attached to their house. And. It's difficult if we're in the smaller zones, how are you gonna get the turnaround if that's the situation? So I think we're creating just some unforeseen issues. Um, and you know, we're gonna learn and we're gonna keep talking through this, but um, I think that's a very tricky thing. To ask people to do. Thank you.
Thanks, yeah, I think, I think we have seen, um, we have this provision in other areas where you can still have that attached garage. Towards the rear of the house, just not on the front. Um, and still have room for, for turnaround, but that is something too to look at. You know, you can look at some lot sizes and, and do some mockups um to see and, and make sure it works for your condition.
Right, well, especially in what is currently the B zone where the lot is sixty or fifty feet wide. How do you turn around? I, I, I'm, I'm just being practical. I'm not trying to be argumentative, but I think.
No, no, of course, yeah, no, these are, these are good questions to ask because you want to make sure it works. Um, so I think you can, depending on, I'm trying to picture like a lot in my head as I'm, as I'm doing this, but. Um, the garage behind the house in the rear yard, um, and then you can still have. Let's see if it's. Or if it's set in from the house in the rear yard, you can still end up having that space kind of in that. Rear yard area where it has a turnaround space.
Maybe, but then you lose your yard, you end up with perhaps more uh pavement, if you will, more hardscape. And Lou's gonna get mad at me for going into too much detail, but I think, I think we really need to think about these things. Um.
Well, but I mean, I, I think the whole notion of doing the turnaround. Adds the hard scape itself. It's not, you know, it, that's, that's, it's not because it's in the back, it's that you're given room for a turnaround. Um, and certainly it's a, a convenient thing to be able to back out of a garage and turn around. It's a, it's a, you know, it's, it's. Super good. I mean, my, I, um, there was a, uh, my, my grandfather's house that was built in the twenties. Uh, while his garage was set back, like we said, it was not attached, could have been attached, it wasn't attached. And it was just driveway, um, pulled straight in, but it was still behind the house. And it was, you know, I had to learn how to do that. I mean, not getting into it, it was the backing out of it. Um, and uh, uh, and so it, 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 it does take a, a little bit to do. I think it's important to realize that you won't be able to build your house setback to setback. And ever be able to have parking behind the house. If the house is taking up the entirety of the lot from setback to setback, there has to be at least a car width. Space alongside on one side to get past it. Uh, unless your alley loaded in, um, anywhere that, that, you know, had, had an alley, it would certainly, it, it. It, it makes it much easier to, to pull off, but.
Right, I, I, I don't think we really have too many alleys in Norwalk. And in a lot of the B zones, if there are older houses and they get rebuilt. Uh, the cost of the land is, is expensive. And so the property owner usually builds to the side setbacks, which is six feet. So you can't really get a, you know, a driveway in there.
And that would, and that would be the thing that, that would, you wouldn't be able to do. You, you, you end up needing to. Instead of building it on all one story, you move up to another story if you need to to get the, the car space by the house.
I'm, I'm wondering if we aren't getting a little too far into the weeds here.
We are, sorry, Lou.
Where, where's the thing about the turnaround? I'm sorry.
It, it doesn't say.
Is that a requirement, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, Steve, I think came up with a solution. I don't know if it got implemented or yet, but it's something that we can.
Is it a requirement, first of all, or is it a requirement only in certain zones or on certain type of streets?
The, for the turnaround, I don't, yeah, I, I mean, the, the parking court is on page sixty-four.
That's what, that's what Steve's uh, Steve provision was about.
The, the turnaround, I don't think there, there isn't a general requirement for allowing a turnaround.
You wouldn't need him if you had the parking court thing, you wouldn't need a turnaround. You're sitting there right up the street, I think.
No, but I'm asking in the current regulations.
So, so the existing regs, um, this is what causes a lot of problems that Mr. Mousak had mentioned is. It, it says you can't put parking in the front setback. So essentially what happens is if you put. A piece of pavement in your front, in your front yard, that's more than eight and a half by nineteen, it ends up being considered a parking space. So sort of a workaround that staff has kind of done for years is if you make it less than eight and a half by nineteen. It doesn't be, it's not considered a parking space and becomes a turnaround, but it's not formally in the regulations.
There's no requirement for turnaround in the current ones or in the new ones, but people have been building turnarounds. Because of how the current ones are written and we don't want the turnaround.
No, I think.
Turnaround, I don't think, other than it's pervious, I mean.
And part of the reason you have the turnaround is because the garage is at the front of the house. So you look at the house, there's the garage. And when you back out of the garage, you don't write necessarily back right out onto the street because people prefer to pull out forward.
I back straight out.
There's.
Depends on what kind of street you live on.
There, there's a huge public safety factor involved, backing out into a busy street. Is, and you're crossing a sidewalk and possibly even a bike lane backwards, you're not able to see people coming. And uh, and that, and so the turnaround is basically a public safety issue, allows you to get out front first. Onto, especially if you're on a busier road and uh, and see, I live on a, on a quieter street. But there are people always on the sidewalks walking their dogs and sometimes we don't see them. Sometimes I'm backing out. Uh, uh, yeah, I mean, I actually have a driveway that goes all the way down into the back of my house, but sometimes I park in the front and then I back out. And I, people yell because you're almost gonna hit them because you don't see them, you know, uh, they're, they're in the sidewalk. And so the, so uh, certainly on busier streets, which are lots of in Norwalk. It is the turnover that I need for a turnaround is a public safety issue. Uh, there are lots of accidents where people are hit. Uh, backing out of driveways. It's actually, it's like one of the biggest conflict points in the city, I think.
And something new every day.
Yeah, so the turnarounds are actually, you know, very important to have.
Jessica, let's move on.
Okay. Um, so the next one was on, um, why not regulating lot size or lot area, but just lot width? So in typical form-based codes, what is really perceived from the public, from the community is lot width? Um, so that's why we don't regulate lot area or lot size because it isn't, unless you're looking at a map. You could be walking past a site, it could be a hundred feet wide by two hundred feet long, it could be a hundred feet long. It, what is perceived is really that lot width and not the lot size. Is there any thoughts or comments, questions on, on that one?
Well, when an applicant, let's just say, happened to have a piece of vacant land, if somebody comes in and says, can I build a house here? And I've got a hundred feet of frontage, what if it, you know, at what point, what if it's only ten feet deep? I mean, obviously that's impractical, but I mean, there has to be some way for people to understand. Because now we have this circle base, you know, you, you have X percent lot coverage and then there's this circle. So what are the new, what's the new criteria other than you have to have a hundred feet of frontage? And in the B zone, nobody has a hundred feet of frontage anyway, so the old B zone. Um, so I think it needs to be clarified in some way or at least two reference points, not just one.
There, there are actually multiple provisions that, that work on that lot coverage is one of them. Um, your setbacks is another one. And you, you just, you know, to put a house there, it's, it's not, obviously it can't just be a hundred feet. And then go back to a narrow, narrow point in the back um, as a practical matter. And so it's, it is, it is all about the frontage. Um, and you know, so, somebody comes with that plan, I mean, it'd be a pretty quick point out. With your building a house and your house is gonna be, be ten feet deep, um, you know, or whatever. Uh, so that's the, but it is the setback in the lot coverage, that is the, the key.
So in your community where you live, an appraiser goes to, you know, check something out. And they say, oh, this only has um seventy feet of frontage and it should be a hundred. So do they automatically devalue it because of that?
I actually haven't seen an appraiser do that, um, unless he's pointing out the fact that it doesn't comply with a standard. That, you know, is in the subdivision regs or in the zoning, but.
Yeah, that, I mean, that lot in that case, if it's already, if it's an existing lot, seventy feet, that's an, it'd be a non-conforming lot.
Yeah.
So you'd be able to, you know, you, you wouldn't be forced to, to make it a hundred feet. Because you're, you're just an illegal, non-conforming lot at that point.
But it, but it would limit what you could put on it. It, it limit to a house that could still meet the setbacks and, and get in in that seventy feet, but.
And i- in communities that just do this frontage thing, they're, they still talk about lot size, right? I mean, they still talk about, or Puerto Rico.
They don't.
They don't?
Uh, lot width.
Okay.
Brian and I did talk about, you know, we, and just trying to think through this a little bit. The, the word, if somebody tries to get cute with some tortured lot lines or something, so. We could always have a provision in there, and it's really more for. Subdivision purposes more than anything else, that if you have to have the lot circle of the same. That's the same width, so we could do something like that, the current regulations do require. That that, um, minimum width be carried back, is it seventy feet, Brian, from the, from the street, so. That's how it's handled currently, it is really to deal with the tortured lot lines, the key thing also is that the. Any lot has to have that width on a street, so it's not like you can just. Go back, uh, twenty feet and then change the line, if you don't have the width on the street, it's not going to benefit you at all.
Right, it's, it's the width at the front, it's right.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mike here. I, I'm glad you said page sixty-four in the last conversation. Uh, because I was actually looking for that. Uh, and I've just read it, and, uh, not to, uh, belabor that, but this looks really good. So, uh, I, I think the question, uh, that Nick had asked me earlier, does this meet? Or approach what I had been desiring earlier, and I said I wasn't sure, well, I am sure now, because I saw that it was on page sixty-four. I talked about the percentages of the front yard for parking, et cetera. This is all good stuff, uh, and I think that's, uh, so, wanted to just get that in there, but we can move on now.
Great.
I, I think the fact that we added page numbers is a mighty step forward.
I've been wanting to read that whole thing for a long time and I read parts of it and then I fall asleep. Uh, but I, I do get through it, I, but the page sixty-four I hadn't, I hadn't been, um, aware of. Uh, and so there it is, so thank you.
Well, we'll thank Steve because, uh, he, he's the one who wrote it, so we'll give.
Earned the concerns and he, and he literally wrote that.
Thank you, Steve, yeah, I, I think you might have been channeling some of my effort over the years. Thank you, it's so important, it really is, I mean, Tammy had touched on it, it's so important, it, it's how people use their. Property in terms of with their cars, you know, and it, uh, I think this will help, certainly help a lot of people.
Okay, so, um, next item was, uh, about the research and development, uh, your existing RD district. And why those two properties, Lakota Oaks, and then the one in Rowayton, um, moved into. CD three S or, um, CD three. Uh, we had conversations with staff about the research and development district, and really just because it was just those two properties. We originally threw around the idea of creating separate zones, one for each of those. To kind of reflect what's happening, but when you have only essentially one property in a zone, doesn't necessarily make, make sense to have a zone for that. Um, so, in working with staff, it, it felt best to put those into the same zone as the adjacent properties. And then write language that allows for those existing uses to continue. But it wouldn't, it is true that it wouldn't allow them to redevelop into anything other than what the zone they are now in does. So that was, that was the way it was done.
So in other words, they're not going to be protected in perpetuity as they are.
They're, they're actually not.
No, they're not.
Right, that's what I said, that, that was my question, they are not.
Right, that, that is correct, yep.
But well, the uses though, the, so long as they continue to use it.
Yeah.
In, in the same fashion, right.
Right, for now, but if, if the property owner goes to sell it. Then they could be changed into anything that's allowable in that zone. So in other words, Lakota Oaks or the Grand Capital property could become single-family housing. Given a hundred-foot frontage, et cetera.
Yeah, and, and I mean, keep in mind, I mean, look, I don't know about the other property, but Lakota Oaks. About half the properties, uh, is already deed restricted for conservation purposes and has. Wetlands, ponds and everything else, so there's nothing, can't do too much on that site regardless.
As we found out.
You mentioned, um. Possibly having a zone for each unit, not doing that. Um, and I know a term gets thrown around a lot that I was wondering if you could. Define for us and help us understand where it fits in with any of this, which is spot zoning. Can you explain, like, what that is, whether this is that, why this isn't that, anything like that?
Mr. Brand's probably ought to answer that as spot zoning question in, in, in terms of Connecticut law.
But, but what's the, what's, the, the question is as applied to what? I'm sorry, what, what?
I'm, I'm using the most recent. Example, you were talking about possibly having a zoning rule just for one or two of these properties as an example. But in general, with this idea of rezoning. There's, um. You know, lots more people are, uh, going to be watching this meeting and other meetings that are in the meeting right now. And we don't all have the same understanding of these terms, certainly I don't. Um, so I hear the phrase spot zoning being thrown around a lot to describe various things that we're doing here, and I wanted to know. If you could define it.
Sure, I, you know, it, it's, it's. The classic definition of, of spot zoning is. The, the rezoning or zoning of a very small area, now. A small area in Canterbury is probably not the same as a small area in Norwalk. So what is a smaller area, but of a small area. It is out of harmony with the comprehensive plan, now. The comprehensive plan is not the plan of conservation and development, people routinely confuse those. People will say to you, well, the, the plan of conservation development says this, so this must be spot zoning, no. The comprehensive plan is the, the policies. That are reflected in the zoning regulations and zoning map. So, remember that in many towns, the zoning commission and the planning commission are completely separate. Um, the planning commission adopts the plan of conservation development, the zoning commission adopts the zoning regulations. So spot zoning is, is, is a small area of rezoning. That somehow defies the pattern of the zoning regulations. It's been decades since our appellate courts found spot zoning. Um, it is almost a dead, a dead concept. Um, and, um, so the fact that the commission is considering, uh, shifting zone lines. Or, you know, eliminating zones, consolidating zones, none of that is going to ever be considered spot zoning. Um, the other question I, though, the, I, this is why I wanted to ask you to clarify your question. You talked about a regulation that only applies to certain lots, okay? The question there isn't spot zoning, the question there is what's called the uniformity clause. And the uniformity clause is in eight dash two of the statutes, what it says is. That the requirements for each zone must be uniform throughout that zone. Like anything else that has been construed by the courts, and it doesn't always mean quite what it says, for example, there was a case out of Suffield. Where the town only allowed, uh, airport parking lots, basically. Uh, with, that were accessible to Route seventy-five. Uh, and which was only part of the zone. So it was, it was, it was applying a rule to only part of the zone. And people along Route seventy-five who, who wanted to have these airport parking lots. Uh, but go deeper, challenge that in court, and the court's holding was that that was not a violation of the uniformity clause. Because it applied uniformly to all properties on Route seventy-five and all properties not on Route seventy-five. Okay, so. The, there again, it's, it's gotten pretty tough to find something that violates the uniformity clause. In my review, I, I flagged a couple of things in this regulation that I, that I suggest to staff take a look at and the consultants take a look at. Um, but as long as, as long as you, you have a, a rule. That, that applies uniformly throughout the reg, I mean, shall be on an arterial street. Shall, um, at corner intersections, yes, it affects one lot in the zone differently than other zones. But as long as it applies to all corner lots or all arterial roads or whatever the standard is, I think you're going to be okay under that Suffield case.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
You're happy to.
See, the next item was on, uh, the requirement for, um. Buildings to have eighteen inches kind of finished floor level. Um, and question on what happens with ADA compliance? And that eighteen inches is, is a lot of the times put in for helping with design of creating kind of that, that base, middle and cap. To buildings that you want to see, but that is something that we're completely okay with taking out, if, if you all want to take that out, we can. We can take off that eighteen inches minimum floor and just leave it at thirty-six max.
Particularly with respect to, uh, non-residential, I mean, non-single-family residential thing. It's really more of a house thing than it is a storefront thing. Um, in, in terms of getting it off the ground. Uh, it makes your windows layout better and there, there are a number of design regions to do it that way. Um, and unless they change ADA, I don't think ADA gets triggered by single-family residential.
Well, then maybe it's worth noting that it just is for single family. Because, uh, obviously.
No, we, we definitely, yeah, yeah. I agree.
ADA might apply to a single family. If someone requested a, a reasonable modification of the rule for a ramp or something like that. But it wouldn't prohibit you from adopting a regulation such as you're discussing, I'm not saying you should or shouldn't. But it wouldn't do any kind of a blanket prohibition, you, you might, if someone requested a modification, you would have to grant it, whatever it was they were asking for.
Um, the next item was on, uh, some questions on the village districts, so in the East Avenue Village District. Uh, the requirement of open recreation area of a hundred, uh, square feet. Um, and whether or not that was big enough, it's actually a hundred square feet per dwelling unit for multifamily. So, um, you would never end up with just a hundred and square, a hundred and fifty square feet. You'd end up with a lot more because it'd be multiplied by however many dwelling units they put into that multifamily. See, on the East Avenue Village, uh, Zone, um. Uh, having rooftops, rooftops are listed as one of the public open spaces. And, um, that is up to you all, if you want to have those, is allowed as public open space, um, it does say they would need public access. So you'd have to have some way to kind of point people up to the rooftop, say it is public, um, and there can be issues with that, so. It's, that came from, that was in the existing regulations, so that's why you're seeing it here too, it was just brought forward from the thing, but. Something that's up to you all whether or not you want to change that.
We, we tried largely to, to not. Uh, change your village district provisions, the special overlay provisions, and so you'll see some of that pop up that way.
There's another question on, uh, public realm and just kind of, um, where to find the information on public realm. So in, in the community district tables, so such as on page one twenty-two for CD five. Um, it says ten percent of the area needs to be public realm spaces in accordance with four point three point one nine. So it's saying like, um, so there it just tells you the percentage and then you would go to, and I'm going to find the page number here real quick. So I'm scrolling through here. Sorry, I'm getting, getting to the page, um. So then on page two ninety-four is where you'd find section four point three point one nine. That has those additional requirements for public realm spaces.
And is that only on, um, commercial buildings, not residential?
It is, um, let's.
Page, please.
Sure, so, um, so four point three point one nine is page two ninety-four, so that's where the. Uh, requirements are for, for public realm, um, but then they apply to the East Norwalk Village TOD zone. Um, the, uh, uh, let me see, CD four C and CD five. So you'd find within those community district tables, how much public realm you have to. Provide.
So it doesn't apply to the threes, right?
It doesn't apply to the threes, so it wouldn't apply for, you don't have it for your single-family districts. Um, it's really for four C, five, and then your East Norwalk Village TOD. Um, and then buildings in CD five too, so in that four point three point one nine. Um, under item A, it lists kind of what's exempt from having to comply with public realm spaces. So that's anything within CD five with less than ten units or historic structures. Um, and then in CD four C, any multifamily or mixed use with less than twenty-nine dwelling units. So it's really trying to capture those larger multifamily. Um, dwelling units or buildings.
And I, I think I'm right in saying that that was all brought forth from the existing.
The, the idea of the public realm was brought forth and then, um. Staff had kind of ideas of, of how, how to change it and, and adapt it, I think, so.
Yeah, we, we were trying to, you know, as you indicated. The larger projects, more impactful projects, and definitely in, within certain areas of the city, we thought it was appropriate that. Um, you know, that there should be some give back into the community and have public space available within those developments as well.
Well, didn't we just violate the, uh, amount of. Public realm space on one cemetery street because the little amenity butterfly gardens and rain gardens are like ten feet by ten feet?
No, because those aren't, um, those aren't public realm space, that's, it's a different standard.
The whole pocket park is, would be the public realm space there.
Right, that, the public realm space plus the, the front wider sidewalks would also be contributing to that.
I, I think some of these things, I mean, they're like, they're subjective, they're also, I, I don't know, from a. On a approval standpoint, they're tricky to manage. We were getting down to like, you know, measuring all of these things.
But that's why that, one of the reasons why that's a special permit provision, so. It is, you know, you, you have a little bit of subjectivity within the special permit process to determine if. That particular amenity, I mean, we're getting very specific on that zone, but. Whether that specific amenity is consistent with the plan and, and the design guidelines, and that's, that's. A decision the commission has to make on an application by application basis.
And, and then how does, does this have a specific application if. It's both a residential and a commercial property, so, you know, mixed use, I should say.
Yeah, that, that's what, so, a good example of that, and it gets not, it's being built, so it's not built yet, would be the. Project under construction at Timman Road Street across from the police station that has a large. In the front of the building, it has kind of like a courtyard, shared use space. Um, the idea being that there'll be restaurants flanking each end of it and there's outdoor seating and then public amenity. Um, plaza space out in front of that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, Jessica, back to you.
Okay, next one, um, on civic districts, there are a couple about, um. Not liking how civic districts give the city kind of carte blanche to do what they want. And thinking, um, planning and zoning needs to maintain oversight over those. Um, we do in the civic district do have some standards and then do note under the facade provisions that. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission has control over kind of the facade via special permit. Um, I don't know too, and maybe the attorney can speak more to this, but, um. How enforceable the provisions are in general, generally what we've seen too is that city buildings are exempt from having to follow zoning. Um, so. But.
In in Connecticut municipalities are not exempt from zoning unless they pass an ordinance to that effect. And I presume that that uh Norwalk is not. Um, the level of discretion in the special permit process is very high. Um, over the last twenty or thirty years, we've had a a series of appellate cases where um where the the law has just accorded more and more discretion on special permits. Um, in one of the early cases from like the sixties, uh, said that a special permit had to have uh specific standards within it, detailed standards. But um about twenty years ago, there was a case um called uh Timberwind versus Middlefield Planning and Zoning Commission, where the Supreme Court held that specific conditions included a regulation that 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 had as its criteria, and I quote, "The use shall not be adverse to the public health, safety and welfare," period, unquote. That was, that was found to be sufficiently detailed standards. Now, I don't know how much vaguer you can get, okay? Um, so, so.
What was that case again?
Uh, uh, Timberwind versus Middlefield Planning and Zoning Commission. I can get your site in a minute if you need it. Um, and uh, because I think I have it on screen if I need it. Um, but um so you've you've got a pretty high level discretion in reviewing special permits.
Is there more discussion, I guess, on the civic districts that you all want to talk through? Okay. Um, don't see any on that, so.
Chairman, sorry, uh, Timber Trails. Timber Trails Associate for Planning and Zoning Commission, ninety-nine CON APP seven sixty-eight is, I think, the one I'm after. Ninety-nine CON APP seventy-eight to the two thousand and seven case. Uh, let's see what else it was. Yep, I think that's the one that had that.
That should be enough to Google. Thank you.
Sure, oh yeah, no problem.
Um, next item was um question about limited density around the Row, Row Eight and Train Station downtown. Um, I will say typically we would not even recommend to regulate density. Um, it's not something that people perceive. So typically in form-based codes, it's not something that's regulated. Um, a lot of cities can't get on um board with with not having density in because it is something that people are used to used to using as a as a metric. Um, so, um, I don't know if you all want to kind of talk through more on on the density about train station or downtown, but we're happy to to kind of take your all's lead on on how you want to handle that.
I just have a question about density in train stations, and it might not be for you, Jessica, but in in Norwalk, you have retrain stations that are um along the Metro North Line that are not the spur train. So you have Row Eight and East Norwalk and South Norwalk. South Norwalk and East Norwalk are much more urban. And the Row Eight and Station is strictly residential. And then if you go up Merit seven, you have um urban and the business sort of zone. So is there any distinction given or taken into consideration for train stations that are just in a completely residential area?
I don't think the, I don't know what the code does. Um, Steve, I I see you unmuted there. Do you have a?
Yeah, I I would say that's just because of the way the zoning developed around the train station. That's 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 just why the way it is like that. You, I mean, i- if the area was at the end of the metrics that we apply to, you know, the broader metrics that we apply to why we are recommending development where is really um transit, um city services and employment centers. That's kind of where we figure that's where we should develop around that and support that with those, uh, you know, by providing the incentives, but if the zoning doesn't permit the density there, then the zoning, you know, then development won't happen.
So Steve, given that treatment, though, wouldn't you, wouldn't the map, so the map currently doesn't show any really change over the Row, Row, Row Eight and Station, right? From what it is, given what you're just saying, would you consider some distance around the station to be upzoned in in a particular way?
We've had some, you know, conversations around that. I I, you know, I think it's possible to do something around there that was, you know, context sensitive and tastefully done. I think, you know, you could look at um potentially having the CD three in an area in and around there, you know, you yeah, obviously, the, because when you get to the north, then it starts to become a lot more um large lot, single family. So, you know, you don't want to push it out too far that direction. And then, you know, to the south, when you get to the uh village district, that does allow for multifamily. So I I there's an opportunity there to consider it, you know, um, we're we're starting to have the conversations in the communities now and you know, we'll we'll broach that and see where it goes.
My, I have an opinion about that uh area around the Row Eight and Station and that it's not a mixed-use area. And so, and the infrastructure there does not support uh, the idea of adding higher density because of the lack of mixed use, uh, and whether that's historic or it was zoned out, you know, historically, it just it's the, it's the village district south of, um, you know, the Row Eight and Village District uh proper that is the commercial center. And so unfortunately, the station is a mile away from the commercial center. Just the way things developed over the years. And um, and making those connections, the city's actively doing, you know, pedestrian and bike connections from the station down to the um little downtown Row Eight is is so important, but there are, I know that there are lots of people who walk from Row Eight and Woods over to the train station and other surrounding uh sort of higher-density developments, there there are walking routes that have been developed. And that that um, so it's kind of naturally developed into a TOD zone, but just not with the density. But I I would be, I I don't know, I I just see uh lots of conflicts with trying to turn anything around the Row Eight and Station into what, anything that might resemble more mixed use just because of the in, the infrastructure doesn't support it.
Yeah, and I was wasn't advocating that. I would say, I I, you know, the thing we were maybe, you know, kicking around um would be like allowing the one or two family option in 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 some pretty tight areas around the the station itself, but not not introducing the commercial.
Right, I got it. So that conversation, yeah, I guess uh can happen. I uh, good, well, these are all, these are important. I think Row Eight is unique, though, in terms of how it is dealt with in terms of the other stations, just by its historic um nature. So there it is.
And you got to put your mic down.
Thank you. Isn't there some part of it that is getting upzoned, um unless I'm misunderstanding exactly where the boundaries are, like, um a little further to the right on the map, like up to Devil's Garden and like you were saying, where the Row Eight and Woods condominiums are there, that's an area that's B and gonna propose to become three, whereas the parts further south are currently B and gonna be three S.
The the Devil's Garden community has already written us saying, please don't change us, so.
Please don't change it. So, but so that is a change to the Row Eight and area. How close or far to this train station, I'm not sure.
Yeah, that that is, like, it's a change that we've recommended. Um, as I said, they they did put something in writing to ask us not to go in that direction. So that's that's something you guys will have to kick around during the deliberation process down, always down.
Sort of related, you said that um, that decision point on on where things got sort of upzoned was distance from transit and employment and um something else. I forget what the third one was.
Infrastructure, yeah.
Infrastructure. Um, the question has been raised in looking at the B zones that went up versus didn't go up. Why um proximity to industrial areas wasn't also considered a reason to go to three?
Um, I'll, I'll take another look at that. I mean, I would always, I would lump industrial areas as part of um commercial and the employment centers potentially. We'll take another look to see if that didn't jive that way. Um. I think, you know, there were a few areas where, you know, I mean, you you probably could have gone with the CD three or the CD three S one way or the other, but sometimes you're trying to make the lines make sense as well. So it's like, you know, if if just take a peek at the existing zoning map and it's just like uh hodgepodge stuff in certain areas. So we we tried to just make it more uniform. So if somebody's looking at the map, whether they're a Realtor or whether they're a homeowner or a prospective uh property purchaser, that they they can understand a little bit of the rhythm and the the form of how the regulations came about. We tried to provide like a um I'm kind of like a gradation between, you know, the you have the transit, the employment and the infrastructure. And the closer you are to those things, you're that where is where the most density is. And then as you move away from them, you start to uh drop down in in intensity of the uses. So that that's kind of the model that we follow. We kind of think of it's like a smart growth model in in a lot of ways. And I think it's just kind of a common sense approach to how we should do things. And, you know, twenty years from now, if we find that these boundaries aren't sufficient, you move the boundaries around. As long as we have the the zoning districts correct, that moving lines on the map, I think, is the easiest, sometimes most difficult conversation, but the easiest item to handle.
And did you have any, like, particular location that you were looking at for the industrials that we can take a look at that, too?
Yeah, I think the one that was raised, and I'm not, I'm not advocating one way or the other. I'm just trying to learn and raise questions that I've heard um from different neighbors is um when I look down, gosh, how to describe this? You know where Kaiser Point is? And then there's something a little, I guess, north of there that's industrial. And then there's an area, Village Creek, that's, I think, staying three S or three L. And the question of it being near an industrial area and why it doesn't go to three was raised.
Actually, yeah, I think when, like, looking, like, if you're going down, uh, it's like Harbor, Harborview, Village Creek area. Uh, most, most of those changes, so the C-zone already exists today for most of like, uh, like Neptune area and Narimac. Um, and really what you're starting to do there, you're starting to get further away from really just any sort of mass transit. And, you know, it's really starting, that distance is really starting to kind of get away from what we were focusing on as far as our, you know.
Brian, do you know if those are on um City Sewer?
Um, I believe they are. I can double check that. But so, yeah, it's something that we can take a look at and consider as we go further in our discussions.
Well, also, don't forget that Village Creek is a association neighborhood and they have certain, their own self-imposed kind of uh regulations on renovations and stuff. So that might make a difference there.
Is that how the other similar neighborhoods are treated in this? I I'm not familiar with the different associations.
Or Front Park is also an association neighborhood.
Oh, no, yeah, we didn't really consider like associations or any sort of, you know, if they have any sort of deed restrictions or anything like that, but that was not.
That wasn't considered, okay.
Yeah, and those other areas to the south, there, that's a pretty good distance away from where you're really getting to the more of the core infrastructure parts of the city. It's a different, different makeup.
Thank you.
When you're saying infrastructure, what do you mean?
So for infrastructure, for the purposes of what I'm using, it would be, you know, major road networks. Um, City Sewer is one, availability of public water. Those were what I would consider more on the infrastructure side of, for how we'd looked at the land use pattern.
Not things like schools, libraries, parks, that sort of thing?
Uh, no, we, you know, schools is a good one. We did look at, that was one of the reasons for, um, you know, on the changes around Devil's Garden, for example, why that got bumped in. But again, a lot of, there is a little bit of subjectivity built into that part of it as well.
No, I would anticipate that most of these association neighborhoods, if you're upzoning them, are going to push back. Because, you know, they like sort of what they are.
Right, but I mean, I don't think.
You just anticipate that.
I don't know, I know, I expect that. And I, I mean, I don't think we can, I I think the one glaring thing that when we looked at the, you know, the area Brian just mentioned with Neptune and Baxter, that that's been uh two families owned for fifty, sixty years and
Hundred years.
But, yeah, the ma- the majority of the houses there are single family. So but, and I think that's what the market indicates, and that's what the people that move in there, what they want. So there, no one's, if if a zone changes to one or two family, no one's required to build a two-family. You can still build the single family if you want. You can build a single family within ADU if you wanted as well, but um, it's it's your option.
Also, if you're moving into these neighborhoods with all these sort of deed restrictions on top of the property, then the zoning already, like, doesn't really impact you that much. You already have these additional standards for you purchasing that property that you have to comply with. So and just because the zoning changes, if the deed says you must do X, Y and Z, then technically you need to do X, Y and Z regardless of what the zoning says.
So the deeds are always going to supersede it.
Yeah, so we don't enforce deeds, but if you're purchasing, purchasing a property with some sort of deed restriction on it, then that's up to your association to sort of take care of.
Thank you.
And just to throw it in, if you're talking about the Neptune area, all of that is in the flood zone, and it's a neighborhood that has had very little renovation over the years, but it's really starting to turn, and the pandemic has definitely accelerated that. Um, but now people down there are coming up, you know, fifty percent value rule, and I know that's, we get off topic, Lou. You get, I mean, there, there's a lot of things to take into consideration with change in these neighborhoods.
All right, let's, let's move back uh to uh Jessica.
Okay. Um, so bike parking requirements and having more of those. Um, so there are a couple of different things we can put into and want to get your all's opinion on on what you wanted in here. Um, I mean, there's different things you can put in, such as requiring different facilities for different um building types uh over a certain size. You can have locations of where bike racks need to be. So I just wanted to hear more from from you all and what you're looking for 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 these bike requirements.
I was curious to see what what are you seeing being implemented?
Yeah, yeah, I think those are two of the big ones is um bike rack locations, like a bike rack needs to be within a certain number of feet from the door. Um, so it's like you can't put your bike rack in the rear of your lot and hide it away, you know, so it's easily accessible to people coming to the site. Um, some have gone very farther and said, you know, for mixed use or multifamily buildings over a certain size, or even offices over a certain size, you have to put in a changing room or or things like that, or bike showers, um indoor bike racks. So so those are some of the the two kind of big ones that I've I've seen.
Thank you.
So that was, I believe, the end of kind of the the topics that we had. Um. So we're happy now to kind of answer other questions that you have, or if I missed anything, I'm sorry. I'm happy to kind of touch on that, too.
As you know, we um uh established um, a um, a series of um criteria uh to be used in um uh, the East Norwalk um uh Transit Oriented District uh to give people the opportunity uh to um uh develop up to an additional story uh i- if they secure sufficient number of points. Uh, I understand under the new zoning, um, they, that developer can, am I right about this? Can, as of right, go up that additional story to uh three and a half stories? And if, and if so, um, then um what becomes of um uh this point system that we develop? How, if at all, uh, is is it used?
So it, I can, I can answer.
Oh, okay.
It it would be just, it would be density-based at that point. So the 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 zone gets changed to the underlying zone, the neighborhood business zone goes away throughout the city. So that gets incorporated into the new CD four zone along with our current D resident zone. So the the underlying height would match. So the only thing that, which I think is what they really want is So the, the underlying height would match. So the only thing that, which I think is what they really want is the density. I think anybody that builds, the height might be nice because they need the height to accommodate the density. But I think the density is what they really are after. We've been talking internally, going a little bit off topic on some of the amenity points within that and thinking of some other ones to add, and then maybe tweaking the formula a little bit. Because we are now looking at solar as a requirement. So it's, it wouldn't be fair for let them have to, they're going to have to do solar anyways. So they shouldn't get points for something they have to do. So we're going to think about some other things and bring those to you for consideration at a later date.
Okay, thank you.
Jessica, one question I had is, are there ideas or things that sort of you sort of left on the cutting room floor? Things that, you know, more outside the box, things you thought about, you weren't really sure, but you ended up cutting. Just seeing that if you, if you had any of those, it'd be sort of helpful to see what we may be missing on the, on some of the pieces here.
Kind of think through, I don't.
I, I don't know of any, and like we said, even on sustainability, you guys pushed us further than probably what we would have even said.
Just based on our experience in other cities, yeah. I will say, I mean, I touched on this already, density, we typically would not put density in. But again, you'll, if you look through some of our other codes, it's probably in a lot of them, just because the cities aren't comfortable not having density in. So that's something that, that we would initially recommended having not in there and, and was put in.
There are plenty of cities who have adopted recent zoning ordinances without any parking requirements whatsoever. That's like another thing that's kind of trendy. I don't think I've written one that didn't have any in it, but.
Yeah, you keep hearing us say, we recommend these things, but we haven't, we haven't, we haven't done them.
We have failed to sell the, some of the things you recommend yet. Did you say we don't have street sections?
We don't have street section.
I think that's, that's a thing that, and I, and I don't even remember how we ended up with no street sections, Steve, Mike. But typically, we would, we would regulate the street sections by context, just like, just like everything else we've done. And, you know, it really helps with the public realm. We've got the separate public realm standards in here. And, and that, you know, bridges part of the gap. But in, in some cities, the, the whole street regulation thing is so separate from the planning and zoning thing that, you know, it, it's just a, it's difficult to sell it that way. But most of our codes would have street sections and, and that sort of thing, you know?
Steve, is there a reason we didn't, or?
I don't, I don't remember, actually.
Bill and Jessica, if, if we're adopting a complete streets policy, which the city is just kicking off now, would that handle that aspect of it?
Then, you said Jessica, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, I think that was one of the conversations we had about not putting them in was because you guys are going to be going through this complete streets policy. It's whether or not, I guess, what comes out of that is regulatory. So if what comes out of that is regulatory, that'll kind of handle it and go into more detail, probably to work out those street cross-sections.
There, there are a lot of, there are a lot of complete street provisions that are, they're more suggestive. Not suggestive, that's a wrong word. They suggest more than, more than require. And a lot of them don't even have street sections in them. And, and again, it just depends on, you know, how far you take that complete streets concept.
Do you mind sharing some of those examples?
Sharing which examples?
Some of the street stuff that you're talking about? I just haven't seen that in code before. I'd be curious to take a look at that. And then, anything on affordable housing that you've seen people use to sort of encourage that development? I know Steve may kick me because I know the city's going through a, a housing plan. But since we're talking about what sort of land use and how to encourage different things, I know I saw Lou, you got your very clever commercial space affordable housing fee, which I thought was excellent. But curious if you guys have seen anything else to sort of encourage that in di- in different parts of the city.
I think one thing too, like with your ADU provisions and all of those, like adding in, allowing for ADUs in more areas and just allowing for different housing types, like we talked about, I think, townhomes and stuff to allowing those for, for sale. So I think all of just allowing for different housing types plays into more affordability. There are workforce housing provisions in here that kind of came from what, what was brought forward and legal. So I think, I think that it's a lot of the times, it's kind of based on what you're allowed to put in, what, what the state has allowed and so.
On that note, Mark, oh, sorry.
For attorney, attorney brands on affordable housing. You know, we require ten, ten, ten percent.
Okay, good.
And I'm wondering, are there communities with higher requirements?
I, I drafted a regulation that's now moving through the process in Glastonbury. It has ten percent for subdivisions. Of course, Glastonbury is more suburban than urban, and twenty percent for multifamily. The other thing that I have recommended to our client towns, mostly unsuccessfully, is to require that all ADUs be deed restricted at eighty percent median. And I say that because they're going to rent for affordable housing prices anyway. And you get credit toward your ten percent. As you probably know, twenty-one, twenty-nine prohibits you from doing that unless you opt out. So if you opted out of, of that twenty-nine ADU,
Then we have.
Then you, then you, you can, I mean, it's, it's low hanging fruit, to be sure. Because like you say, they're not, you're not really costing the owner anything anyway. But I understand that Trumbull got a moratorium by a combination of a couple of A thirty G developments and an amnesty program under which any accessory dwelling unit could be validated, provided they would deed restrict it. And I guess there were tons of them. I, I know in, in studying here in Glastonbury, they, they checked the GIS system and they found like sixty ADUs that were not legally installed. And, you know, one of the questions that I raised was why not give them amnesty if they deed restrict it? But definitely, inclusionary zoning is expressly authorized by eight dash two I of the statutes. So you can definitely do that. The problem obviously with ten percent is it just keeps you even. You don't fall behind your, your requirement, but you don't make any progress. That's why I, I've said twenty percent in Glastonbury, what they'll do with it. They're, they're still studying it.
I mean, I would, I would think there's a point at which your community becomes non-competitive with, with, for example, a twenty percent requirement. A developer may well say, well, I'm going to go to another community because it just costs me too much. Or I lose too much with a twenty percent requirement. Whereas with a ten percent requirement, I'm, I'm, I'm only losing half as much.
Well, I guess the, the, the question then is, why is it that so many developers are bringing in eight thirty Gs that require thirty percent affordable? Half of it has to be at sixty percent of median. So requiring, requiring fifteen or twenty percent of, and, and having to be eighty percent of median is, is a lot less challenging than an eight thirty G. Now, I realize the eight thirty G, they have unlimited density and unlimited zoning. But then again, you're, you're already, I mean, you're already, for example, you're increasing the, the ability to create duplexes. But why not say that for each duplex, one of the units has to be due restricted eighty percent of, of, of median? I, I, I often hear that argument, you know, and, and let me just, I represent developers too. And I have, I represent one of the largest eight thirty G developers in the state. And so I, I, I'm sympathetic to developers. But I would estimate that the number of times that a developer says, your zoning regulations make this not viable, I can't do it. The ratio of when that's really true to when it isn't is pretty small. And I mean, I've, I've heard that, and I've been in this game for a long time. I've, I've heard that endlessly. Oh, if you require that, we can't do it. I, I remember some years ago, developer, there were certain design things that we wanted. And he said, well, I, he said, I can't, I can't do that. And he said, the market isn't there. The market isn't high enough. I said, well, how long do you think it'll take for the market to be here? That will support what we're asking for. He said, oh, it'll be, it'll be twenty years before we reach that point. I said, fine, we'll wait. Town's three hundred years old, but it's twenty years. Well, somehow he found a way to do it.
Mark, I'm not thread. Do we have authority to, let's say, create different tiers? Like, could you say ten percent at eighty and an additional five percent at sixty percent? So maybe we say, we can modulate that.
Eight, eight two I, eight two I gives you very broad authority to adopt any form of inclusionary zoning that, that requires inclusion of affordable housing.
Lou, that'd be something interesting and Steve of, of considering. I know we may want to wait for the affordable housing, but some version of the eighty percent is always a bit of red herring is the only word I have because it's not, not that low. Like when you actually put the number down, it's like,
I don't know.
People claim it's workforce housing and we're giving this away at bottom dollar. And it's like, wait, it's still pretty fricking expensive.
Well, and also.
We do use state, we use state median.
Yeah, and and remember that eight, 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 eight dash thirteen O at SEC, the, the incentive housing program, that is twenty percent of the units at eighty percent of median. And a developer did one of those in Old Seabrook right next to the train station. I don't know if there have been others, but I, I, I was involved in that one, so I know about that one. And apparently, you know, and it's, it's sold, it's built, it's sold, it's, you know, successful. So I, I, I and, and as you point out, Commissioner, it's the, the eighty, even the eighty percent, what you're talking about is sixty percent of median. You're talking a family of four, about forty-eight thousand dollars a year. And at eighty percent, you're talking about sixty-five thousand, sixty-seven thousand dollars a year. So you're probably describing most of your police force and your teachers and your librarians and God knows who else. So it's, it's, it's not, i- it, it's not that low income.
But those also don't come with any subsidies so that the rent doesn't go above thirty percent or any, any sort of cap.
Right, it's, it's called rent skewing. The developer pads the market rate units a bit. And in a good market, and you have a good market, you can, you can do that. And, and then they're able to, to lower the rents on the other units. And by the way, the units are always just the same. In rental, they're always just the same.
Keep in mind, our, our regulations, it's eighty percent SMI, and if they take the eighty percent SMI path, they also have to pay the city a fee, one dollar per thousand of construction value, or ten dollars per thousand of construction value.
And that's new, right? That's not how it currently is.
No, that's, that's how it's been for a while. The Pinnacle Development that is under construction now on West Avenue gave the city a million dollars for that fee alone. Plus, they're giving us ten percent of the units at the eighty percent SMI. Or the other option we provide is the ten percent of the units at sixty percent SMI. So they, that's a, that's a much lower number. And if they do that, then they can get a parking reduction down to one space per unit. So we try to.
What's in here, page three forty-nine, that's not a change from the current workforce, I mean.
That piece, no. The only change is what Chairman Schulman had suggested for the fee for the commercial projects over, I forget the square footage, but.
Thank you.
The, 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 the fee in lieu of is also authorized, so certainly you can do that. The problem that some of the Fairfield County towns have had is they, they build up these funds, but they still can't afford to buy. Land is so expensive, they can't afford to buy, to build any, to build anything.
Yeah, and I, I think, I think what we've seen, and I think which some of them like with Soundview Landing, which has been successful, is where communities have kind of put all the, you know, affordable units in one building. It kind of segregates them from the rest of the populace. And I think that's been like a, a problem for those communities as well.
Well, even we saw, there was a, there was a building we saw recently, I think, where like the affordable unit was this one. And it would stay that one unit, which I understand in terms of like making sure when it turns over that it goes to an affordable person. But then, you know, that, the L-line becomes stigmatized, right? Or whatever it is.
So, so our regu- so just, it's a good question. Our workforce regulations require that there's like an equal dispersment of the units and they're representative of the overall development. And they have to be kind of put into the development, so they're not all like on the third floors, all the affordable units. They have to be dispersed. The units themselves are all inspected by staff, so they have to have the same finishings as the rest of the development. So they can't, you know, you can't go in the, the nice unit and it's got marble countertops and, you know, wolf refrigerator, everybody's got the same stuff inside.
I would add, as a practical matter, the developer's going to do that anyway. When they're building a building, it's, it's too expensive to have different finishes and different units. They're just going to buy them in bulk and they're all going to be the same anyway. I've, I've never seen a, a, no, no A three G client of mine has ever actually, actually made them different. It's just too, it's more trouble than it's worth.
Anna, I don't know if, in fact, I'm, I'm, I'm not sure if any of the, the newer members of the commission are aware of this. But the Norwalk Housing Authority in rebuilding Washington Village established housing for people of, truly people of low income. But they also have apartments, exactly the same apartments for market rate housing as well. And again, dispersed throughout the the buildings. They're also doing that with the rebuild. Gosh, I reme- I forget the name of the development.
Colonial Village.
Yeah, with, with the rebuild of Colonial Village. Well, it's a rebuild and an expansion of Colonial Village as, as well. They're doing the same thing. So they're, they're trying to integrate a mix of, of economic groups rather than simply building a ghetto for people of limited incomes.
The, I'll add to that, the, the, that whole kind of integration of economic and racial status is based on fifty or sixty years of research from HUD. And, and all kinds of academic research, but the, they measure outcomes for children. Educational outcomes and success. And they're always greater, you know, in areas where poverty is not concentrated. So that, that really is the whole movement. That's why Norwalk won the grant from HUD, the Choice Neighborhoods Grant to build, rebuild Washington Village. Because we had promised that we would do that, you know, third, third, third. It was market, workforce, and then truly affordable housing, subsidized housing that had always been there at Washington Village. But, but anyway, it's, i- it's really based on outcomes for children. And that's, that's the goal is to you know, break the cycle of poverty, which happens in concentrated, you know, basically housing projects. So anyway, I just wanted to throw that in there because that's, that's where all that comes from.
We have further questions for Jessica and Attorney Brands.
I guess I'd ask Attorney Brands the same question I asked Jessica. Anything in your reviewing that you've seen other communities do that we're sort of not doing?
No. Getting proactive, you mean in terms of affordable housing?
In, in general.
Oh, in general. No, I mean, I, I think in terms of, of, of emphasis on design and form, th- this is the most advanced that I've seen. And I, I, you're, you're also the, I, I'm trying to, of another town that has as many village districts as you do. I think Old Lime has two of them, but but I think that's the most I've seen. So you're, you're, you're definitely cutting edge from, from what I'm seeing.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Any, anything else? I mean, we have a unique opportunity here. I'm not, I'm not sure we'll have another opportunity with TPUDC and. uh, another opportunity uh with TPUDC and uh Attorney Brands. So I'd encourage you.
You, you have me whenever you want me. I'm, I'm not going anywhere.
I, I have a question. Uh, I, I live in a, I live in a C-zone. It's been this way for decades in Golden Hill, uh, two-family zone. And uh, most of my neighbors, I live in a single-family house, but uh, most of my neighbors that have two-family homes, it's not, uh, there's not dual ownership or two, two owners. Uh, there's a condo complex next door that has the tiniest condo complex I've ever seen where it's duplexes. It's a condominium association, but it's just two buildings. And then next door, there's another one. But for the most part, it's a, it's an owner occupied unit. And they're renting out the other unit uh to uh supplement their income. And I'm wondering, I, I'm just curious about the, the fundamental differences between that and ADUs. Because I'm, you know, we've already passed recently the ADU uh law and a regulation. And uh, and so we kind of philosophically turn single-family uh districts into two-family zones through ADUs, but they're not officially two-family zones. But, but the two-family zoning, the upzoning that's recommended in this study, is this, is this uh, is this necessary with ADUs? What is it going to, what is the difference? What is it going to fulfill that the ADU law does not fulfill? In other words. And I might know some of the answers to that, but I'm just curious because none of our, I heard earlier that it said it will allow dual ownership. But in our neighborhood, it's historically always been an owner occupier and a, and a rental to supplement their income.
Yeah. So for ADUs, I think a big part of it is that it needs to be accessory to the primary structure. So the definition of ADU is that it's an accessory use. Um, it's an accessory building. It needs to be subordinate to the primary structure. Whereas when you're on a two-family lot with a duplex, each one can be not subordinate to each other, you know, each one can be equal. So I think that is the big difference in between ADUs and the two-family.
But in a, in a historically, uh, let's say in a historic area where the houses are off, you know, typical 1940s, 50s inner, inner core suburb. Uh, that's being upzoned into a, into a two-family from a single-family. Aren't you going to see just conversions, basically ADU conversions rather than wholesale demolition and construction of duplexes? Do, do you think? I mean, uh, I guess that's a, that's a hard question to answer, but um.
Yeah, I think it, it depends on the the development pressure that.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to imagine how, how, how the upzoning affects a neighborhood in Norwalk like the neighborhood I live in, which is already two-family. And I've seen the effects of the two-family zone, and I haven't seen a proliferation of duplexes over the years or demolitions. It's a historic neighborhood. All I've seen is people have, uh, you know, built legal units within their existing building. Uh, they, you know, and they, it's like they, we live in a neighborhood of big old houses, basically. And they've been cut up or divided into two, but they haven't been. I haven't seen people knocking down buildings because we're in a two-family zone and building duplexes that are, you know, with identical units, except, except for, you know, one or two cases out of hundreds of properties here. It's, it's just an interesting, I, I think it's a, I'm asking a rhetorical question of, of, rather than specifics, having.
I have, I have seen it. Uh, I've seen it in Manchester. Um, where, where large old houses, rather than dividing them up, they tear them down and, and build a, a standard duplex, a standard 50s style duplex. Um, here in Glastonbury, I've seen it in a couple of cases. Uh, some years ago, Glastonbury opened one of its zones uh to, uh, within areas, it's already developed with older sort of uh 50s, even 40s, let's say 40s or 30s, uh, single-family homes. And I was concerned that people would do exactly that, that they would tear those houses down and put in a box duplex. Um, so um, I, I got them to change the regulation that you could, you can only get a duplex through conversion of the existing structure. Because I was afraid that there would be wholesale demolition. Now, I might have been wrong. But um, I, I, it's something that I have seen and I think really damages the fabric of a neighborhood. When, when you have, you know, a row of, of like you'd say 30s, 40s houses or earlier, and then you, one gets punched out and this just box duplex gets plugged in. Um, so I um, uh, that, that was what I urged back then, heard for that, because of that concern.
Thank you. It's just a, a good conversation to have in this context. I wanted to hear, hear what others' opinions might be. Thanks.
It'll be interesting to know what sort of mediates the difference between those two outcomes, right? And what's most likely to happen in Norwalk or in different neighborhoods of Norwalk, if that can be at all foreseen based on what's happened in these other cities. But at least in your area with the two families, you can have more than a thousand square feet. If you're converting, right?
You, there are, are these sorts of neighborhoods in your village districts?
No. Part, partially, uh, my neighborhood's part, partially and uh Cedar Street is just one, it's probably 10% of our neighborhood is in a village district.
Because to the extent, to the extent that you have architectural control over duplexes, to the extent that you can require them to look good, there is a disincentive to demolish and uh rebuild. It's the, the incentive to demolish and build new is where you can build something ugly and cheap as a two-family. But if you can't, if your, if your form-based codes in your architectural reviews and, and your village, if, if you, if you can prohibit that, then you create incentives to convert rather than demolish. And you, and you have a lot of that in this code.
I, and I think uh, that's good to know. And I think considering uh, just to touch on the conversation earlier about uh, the fact that we've not had a tsunami of ADU applications, if anything, a trickle uh, since we passed the law, that the pressure uh, to convert is not, is not as great as it is for rentals, et cetera. And, and I'm just trying to, I'm wondering if the fear of an upzone from a single-family to a two-family is, is justified uh based on the fact that we haven't seen a flood of ADUs in those zones.
I'm sorry, Darius, you had something?
Yes, couldn't theoretically speaking, couldn't we keep the zone single-family and then change the permitting around um duplexes? And the standards.
You, well, the problem is the duplex is a two-family, I, I think more or less by definition versus versus the ADU, I kind of like what Jessica was saying is that the ADU, whether it's attached or detached, is accessory to the principal building. Whereas the duplex and, and the traditional two-family, you could, they could be equal-sized units. So, you know, if the lot supported it, they could be 2,000 square feet each versus the ADU, which is restricted to that smaller size. I mean, and I'm not sure if this where Mr. Mueschek was going or not, um, but I, I I think at least with the, with the allowing the two-family, you, you have the potential for additional homeownership. We, we can't guarantee that. We can't require it through the code. But we can try to incentivize it somewhat, and I think that might be our best approach with something like that.
Could it be two-family by special permit?
You could, but I think, you know, I would recommend that because I think the special permit is a in that type of application is an overreach and an added layer of complication. We had that conversation right around the detached ADUs. That was a pretty strong back and forth and at the council level too. I think the one thing I like with the approach that TPUDC took, um, with the, with, you know, if you require it with the, with the form-based approach, you're getting a more of a known product as opposed to just allowing somebody to just put a square up on the property with two, two doors to go in and two doors to, you know, a door in and a door out. It's, you, you, you'll, if you allow somebody to build cheap, they'll build cheaper thinking.
I think too, even like it was brought up with these historic homes being demoed and, and two-families or duplexes going up. I mean, you see that today, it's just instead of a two-family go up, it's a new single-family house that's just, you know, twice the size of the, the house that previously existed. So you know, it's occurring regardless.
Tammy, you wanted to say something?
Oh, yeah. Thank you, Lou. Um, I have a, a lot of thoughts on this and I, I like what Attorney Barnes was saying. Um, we certainly in Norwalk in the 1960s and into the 70s and even into the 80s um, have got, we had a lot of building of the ugly two-family house, the box, like Steve is saying, with, you know, the door, the door, and they're plain and they're not that attractive. And the, the form-based suggestion that we're working with here might improve some of that. And I mean, where uh Commissioner Mueschek lives is a historic neighborhood. So there are a lot of interesting older homes. And there are a few what I would call box multifamilies. Um, and, and they don't really add to the neighborhood. Um, so I think if we can set some standards, that's a good idea. And, you know, if I'm sure many of these neighborhoods that are being upzoned don't want to be upzoned. Um, but that might help alleviate certain fear or concern. Um, because with the two-family, if somebody buys it and then they rent it, you know, in general, that's thought, oh, that's not um, not as good for the neighborhood because then you have more people, more cars. You've got the whole parking in the back thing going now, but I don't know how that's going to work out in the smaller lots. So I think some good thought around this might really make it more doable and more improvable. And we've seen um some of the older buildings um around the Norwalk Green and over by the hospital that were um, they could have been torn down and turned into apartment buildings. Um, but they've worked with the old structure and put the new addition on the back. And I think that we're all pretty pleased with that type of redevelopment of a property. And so we should try to foster that idea. Um, and I think when it's more than two-family unit, we need to make sure that everybody understands the definition of two-family, multifamily. And honestly, I think we should call apartment buildings apartment buildings. They're not multifamily like the one cemetery street, 77 units is not like a multifamily building. It's an apartment building and it's rented. I think we can clarify those definitions as we go forward. Thank you.
Sure. We can, Brian and I'll take another look at the CD3 standards and just go through them again. I think it's probably good for everybody to take a peek at that. And then we'll, we'll circle back with um with Jessica and Bill too, to see if, if there's anything else we can anyway to tighten it up and if we feel there's any kind of shortfall there. But I, I, I think that's the approach that makes sense going forward.
Steve, if I could ask a question, I, I'd just like to preface this by saying I have not gotten as far into the code as I, the new code as I would like to. Uh, but I do wonder um if there's been any tune-up done on the special permits that are allowable in the, in the AAA zones. And I'm particularly thinking about the special permits for the churches.
Yes. So we did, we added some language in there, I think, that, because I actually looked at that today because I was doing a PowerPoint for tomorrow night, but I think the requirement now is the lot area has to be double for something like that. Um, and I think we added some additional landscape type standards to, to make sure that there, there weren't the impacts that you know, would be potentially negative for a next-door neighbor if a house got knocked down and then the church was going to go in, like the scenario we saw.
Yes. That's not theoretical.
Uh, is there anything else? All right. If not, um, we'll close out um this portion of the meeting. Of course, we will be coming back several more times uh to the new regulations and the new map. Um, before uh, we uh vote on it. Um, i- if I had to guess, um, I would suspect we're not going to be voting on this uh, much before um uh, au- autumn. Um, we still have a long way to go. Uh, the staff has uh, uh, a huge number of community meetings, meetings with the, the common council. Um, looks like we'll probably have a couple of public hearings ourselves in June. Um, we'll, we'll do some other interim work uh, over the summer, but uh, uh, given criticism that we've received in the past for taking um or making important decisions during the summer. Um, in all likelihood, we will not um, uh, be deciding this issue uh, during, during the summer months. We'll, we'll wait until uh, uh, after Labor Day uh, to uh, uh, consider action uh, on it. Uh, so there'll be lots more opportunities to ask uh questions, get them answered um, until we all uh feel comfortable uh, with uh moving forward on a boat. And of course, unlike some other actions that we've taken, um, this action is entirely our own. We do not uh require any council approvals uh, or approvals of any other boards or commissions. Um, this is our decision to make uh and ours alone. So with that, I'd like to uh, thank uh Attorney Brands and uh our, our consultants from TPUDC, who I very much wish would uh change their initials because always feel tongue-tied when I have to uh, uh, say that. Uh, and um, we'll move on to the rest of the meeting, which I think is going to be fairly brief. Thank you again.
Thank you guys.
My pleasure. We'll see you again. Take care.
Uh, basically, we have um the minutes of one, two, three, four, five meetings uh, that we need to vote on. And I'm sure there are various uh members of the commission who uh were not able to attend every single meeting. So um, it may be challenging for you, but we've got to get this done. Um, so the first is approval of meeting of March 15th. Um, let me challenge the staff. Um, uh, Steve, do you, can you give us uh an item that was on that meeting the 15th so that people could re- recall whether they were there?
This is Chairman, I barely remember 12 noon today, so you're really marking up the run tree, so.
That'd be one cemetery street for anyone who forgot.
Uh, thank you. Thank you for that, Brian.
What, yeah, what he said.
Okay, uh, can I have a motion to approve the minutes of March 15th?
So moved.
Okay, Richard moves, Tammy seconds. Let's just do this with a hand raise. All those in favor? And again, uh, don't vote if you weren't at the meeting. Uh,
Yeah, I abstain.
Any abstentions?
I do.
Okay, so Darius and Hector, did you abstain? Or were you at that meeting?
I was at the meeting.
Okay, so uh, just Darius abstained. Next, uh, March 22nd. Brian, do you remember that?
Which meeting are we at now?
Now we're up to March 22nd.
That will also be Cemetery Street, as far as I remember.
Okay. Uh, motion to approve the, the minutes of March 22nd. Um, Mike Mueschak has moved and uh Nick Cantor has seconded. Um, all those in favor? Hand raising. Um,
I think I missed that meeting, Lou.
I missed that meeting. I was.
Okay, so uh, uh, it's unanimous, but Tammy and Hector are abstaining because they were unable to attend the meeting. Uh, next April.
Sorry, no, I was there. Sorry. I approved on that one. It was the 15th.
Oh, okay. Oh.
So, so just myself and Tammy on 15th.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Sorry.
That's okay. Next is uh April 4th. Um, that wasn't very long ago. Steve, is it still too taxing? I think so. Brian?
I cheated and looked at it. This was when we did the first public presentation of the new regs and a couple of small things at the end.
Okay, good. Thank you very much. Motion to approve the minutes of April 4th. Uh, Hector is, Hector moved. I'm sorry, Darius seconded. I think JJ seconded.
No, 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 I wasn't here.
Oh, okay. Then you'll abstain.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, then you'll abstain, all those in favor? Um, okay, um. JJ, the only one, Richard?
I wasn't there either.
Okay, so, uh, Ri- Richard and JJ. Um, abstain. For April fourth, now we're up to April twelfth.
That's the map.
Right, that was the meeting.
Very good, Steve.
So he's got, his recall goes back two weeks. Um, motion to approve the minutes of April twelfth. Uh, Darius again. And JJ seconds, all, all those in favor?
Um, I, I abstain.
Okay, Tammy abstains, anyone else? Okay.
Nick also abstained, sorry.
Okay. And finally, last week, April nineteen.
I wasn't even there for part of that, so I don't get.
That, that's true.
I will abstain as well, I was not there either.
Oh, right, Michelle ran the meeting, um, okay, motion to approve the minutes. Uh, JJ, I think was first with her hands up, Mike, uh, looked like he was second with the second. All those in favor? Um. And, um, abstentions. Hector and Tammy. Okay, well, thank you very much for that. Uh.
I wanna just, I wanna thank Diana for doing such a good job of summarizing. Our long conversations, uh, I did read through all the minutes and it was quite brilliant. Because it's not easy to, uh, summarize sometimes what we say, especially me, so, thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Uh, comments of the director, Steve?
Um, just a reminder that we, that actually tomorrow night's the first, um, council district meeting, it's District D. Which is at Merritt, uh, five oh one Merritt tomorrow at six thirty. And then the next one, um, is just District C meeting, which I think is next Wednesday night at City Hall in the. Uh, right across from our office, whatever that big room is, but yeah, so those are the first two, community room, thank you. And then, uh, the following week, I think there's. At least three or four, and Brian and I are actually double booked a couple nights, so we'll be out in, uh. I think District D, we have, uh, West Norwalk and two other ones that week as well, so we'll be. Busy couple of weeks and then we'll see what, who else wants to chat with us after those meetings.
Is District B no longer on the first?
District, I'm sorry, Nick?
Be at the Sono Library?
Yeah, that, that's on the first.
Okay, cool.
What, what area is District E? Is, are these areas?
That's North Norwalk, so that's like off of.
Yeah, I think you're District E though, I think, I'll, I'll, I'll send you the link to the map tomorrow, but I. Think you're District E, I, I think that's where it lies then.
And it would be awesome to have that district map, thank you, Steve. Yeah.
Yeah, those, uh, the, the districts are kind of strange how they're like laid out and. I don't know who put them together and why, but they, they were done a long time ago.
I thought they were first, second, third, I didn't know they were A, B, and C.
Well, that, there's also the taxing. Just to make it more.
Never mind your voting districts and all the other ones. So I just wanna, I just wanna let you know, Steve, that I'm gonna be doing double duty that evening, I'm, I will be logging on. Because I also have, um, another meeting, a board meeting that I have to be part of. Um, and that's the, the, um, the meeting at the library, someone, I was, I intended to be there in person, but I'm going to be there virtually.
Okay.
Uh, anything else, Steve?
No, nothing.
I have, I have a question for Steve, though, it's pertinent to everyone here, sorry, uh, uh, the. Amount of interaction we can do on this, uh, on the zoning rewrite with the public when we go to meetings. Is, is that something that is of any concern, can we bring that, should we bring that information back to the commission? And just make a statement or a comment, because, you know, we're, we're out there and everybody here tonight, almost everybody said they've been talking to people and. You know, naturally so, we're part of the community, but I'm just wondering how. What, where is the line drawn between how much we interact? Uh, answer questions, et cetera, in a public meeting versus our role as a commission member and a voting commission member?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, we could probably get some clarification on the ex parte communication from the Law Department. But I think this is a little different than like, uh, a property under consideration.
Obviously, yeah, I assume that, right, so that, that's why I thought we had a little more just, uh, flexibility. In discussing this with folks and, you know, whatever, because we're, it's a city generated, but is, I just wondered if there was a. Kind of a rule or at least a, a consensus among the commission as to how much we can interact, speak. O- on that, you know, uh, uh.
Mike, what I've.
Considering later, we're gonna be voting.
What I've been doing, um, and what I'm going to continue to do. Um, is, um, listen. Um, not share, uh, any opinions with anyone, just listen to what people have to say. Um, I don't think you can get into trouble. Uh, by doing that. Um. You know, we.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to learn how to listen.
We are supposed, we are supposed to. Um, you know, hold, hold our, our powder, consider everything we hear. Uh, before we make a decision, so, uh, my feeling, it would be wrong. Um, to say, um, um, I agree with this or I don't agree with that. Um, and, um, I think the safest course, again. Listen to what, uh, listen politely to what people have to say.
Well, uh, in, in addition to that, I, you know, full disclosure, I'm the vice chair of District B, which is South Norwalk. And so not only do I listen, but I advocate as well, so where do I draw the line?
I think your advocacy belongs here, at these meetings, uh, and not necessarily with the public. Uh, you need to listen to what the public has to say and, and in terms of, of what you say here. That may affect what you say here, that's perfectly appropriate.
Okay.
My understanding was that the issue with ex parte communication was whether we heard things outside of here that were then affecting. Our opinions or our vote and not bringing them to the group, so that's why when I hear things. Outside of here that seem substantive or fact-based or they're a question that I find interesting. Um, even if I've asked it to Steve, I try to ask it in the meeting. Or bring it up in the meeting so that everybody is having the same info- information. I, I thought the issue of sharing our opinions, which, which I agree we shouldn't do, is more about whether. Somebody could argue that there was a predetermination.
Yeah, and I think the other piece is, it's, if, if there's a specific application in front of you on a piece of property. It's definitely bad practice to engage with anybody on that.
Yeah.
But I think.
Once the application's in or once the hearing's open.
Yeah, and considering the scope of the changes we're talking about here. And, you know, we're talking about four or five months down the road, I, I, there, there's no way you're gonna be able to avoid conversations. I don't think that's realistic for anybody to have to do, but I don't think that's the intent of the, the conversation or what the laws are, are meant to do.
But like if I go to a District C meeting and somebody says something or raises a question. That I think is important. Like, I should bring it up in here so that everybody else has that information, unless you're gonna do a readout, Steve, or, or these. District meetings are gonna get recorded and posted so that everybody can see them.
I don't think they're gonna get, well, that's a good question, I don't think they're gonna get recorded, but I guess we could do that, except for the District D because we.
Not avocati, I'm just.
Yeah, I got you, yeah. And, and I think it's good to encourage anybody you talk to to put their thoughts in writing and submit them for the record, that'd be helpful.
Yeah.
And check the city website, there's a lot of information that's publicly available, you know, people. Ask me questions about one thing or another all the time and I say, oh, I believe that's, uh, on the city's website, I will send you the link. To what is publicly available and, and then that's really about it, but, and then you can, what you do with it is what you, but I. And if you have concerns, I'm happy to listen.
I, all this is good, a good discussion, uh, and I, I'll say that over the years, I've. Um, always referred back to the, uh, state statute for the planning commission, even though we are planning and zoning now, but. Uh, we, so we, we still actually, uh, are part of the state statute of a planning commission. But it, it, one of the duties of the planning commission was to educate the public on the P O C D. So I always felt that when I'm talking publicly or writing. And as long as I'm referring back to the P O C D, whether specifically or at least in general, in conceptual terms. I'm doing what the state statute has, um, has given us the, the right and the law and legal ability to do, which is promote the P O C D. As long as I'm not referencing a specific property or property owner. So, so that, that's how I fall into talking in general terms about, and I know, I know JJ, you, you, I've seen you. In action and you do a very good job of, of talking about general concepts at meetings without getting. Without offering opinions, right, and, and that's, we all have to check ourselves, but it's really important to have this. I think a refresher in, uh, conversation in terms of what is expected of us and what we can talk about, uh. Out, out in the general public, uh, at, at all, about this specifically, thank you.
Steve, I know, I know, uh, we're strapped, um. For time in terms of our, our agendas. But, uh, it, it seems to me past due. Uh, time to bring in, um, probably Corporation Council. To talk to us about the ex parte communication.
I, I knew you were gonna ask that, as soon as I heard Mike started going down that road, I said, all right, I better make a phone call tomorrow.
Okay, all right.
That's a motion, I'll second it.
Next, uh, the, the next item, uh, comments of commissioners.
I had one question or one thing I mentioned, Brian, do you have that, those Board of Education numbers? I know during the cemetery project, people were talking about. The Board of Ed numbers and I know staff looked into that, I know we'd said we wanted to come back to that at a future date, maybe this is not the time for that, but. Um, so Brian, I don't know if you have it now or we can put it on like a future agenda, I don't really care, I just wanna make sure. We see those numbers, cause I think they're really interesting for, get on the record.
Yeah, so I can pull, um, yeah, when we were looking at some applications, we, we kind of pulled the, the BOE to kind of see some of the. Apartment complexes in Norwalk to see kind of their impacts on the. On, uh, uh.
Student population, so I could pull this up real quick.
Um. Um, Nick, Brian did send us something with a chart that had the addresses and the number of students. Yeah.
Yes.
That's it, yeah, yeah.
That's it, yeah, yeah.
He did send it in an email.
Okay, so people saw, okay, I forgot if that got sent out broadly or if people wanted more to be able to reference that, but okay, cool, as long as folks have this, I think this was a really. A really useful exercise, Brian, so I appreciate you doing that.
Yeah, it's definitely a helpful chart.
Any, uh, any other, uh, comments from commissioners?
I have a, a comment slash question, um. In my, uh, early days as a lawyer, when I spent all, al- almost every night before some boards, my, my two heroes. Uh, were pro- probably responsible for a lot of the problems that we have. That we're trying to resolve now by utilization of text amendments. And I'm just wondering with this new code. Is it gonna be like, uh, when a road is paved, you can't open it up for two years, or are we gonna have a moratorium on text amendments for a while?
Um, that's a really good question, I think. More than likely, and I, 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 I think this is just the nature of the beast, there's gonna be some unforeseen circumstances and things we didn't contemplate. With the rules that get passed, so we're gonna have to adjust that, um. My former job, we complete, you know, not on this scale, obviously, you, much smaller community, but we did a wholesale rewrite as well. Um, and then about eighteen months later, we went through a, you know, deep dive into what we did and. Some things that worked and some things that didn't work, and we went through a pretty significant revision about eighteen months in after that. And went through another public process and tried to fix.
The mission did that though, right, it wasn't applicants coming forth and saying. You know, I wanna change this so I can do this.
Yeah, it was more in line ba- based on some things that we put in that just didn't work. So we had to fix things and incorrect it, I, I mean, I think the idea would be ultimately that. Outside text amendments wouldn't be necessary, or they would be so obvious, like, yeah, we should have done that because it just makes sense, it shouldn't be. I wanna do this kind of project and you don't allow me to do it in the regulations, I, I think that's what we wanna try to avoid.
Well, I think that's how come there's such a problem with the contractor yards with condominiums right next door. I mean, that was, that was a huge change, I remember when it happened. But anyway.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, I, I told, like, you know, I've said this before, that. What we're doing now and the, the planning studies with the industrial zones and the waterfront stuff is probably as messy work as we're gonna have to do, just because it's. It's a lot of change, it's things that are different, we're just trying to fix stuff that wasn't addressed for thirty-plus years and. We got ourselves into some entanglements because of it, now we're just trying to put it on a solid path that makes sense to go forward, that's what we wanna do.
Okay, anything else before I call for a motion to adjourn? Um, our next, uh, regularly scheduled meeting is May third. Um. So we don't get much of a breather. Um. See you all next week. Um, motion to adjourn. Mike and, and, and Darius and Tammy.
Let's pick one.
Do well, everyone.
Yeah, it was a good conversation tonight, I thought.
Good night.
Great start.
Thank you.
Night, everyone.
Night, everyone.